Test, one, two, test. Test.
Okay, Honorable Council Delegates, let's reconvene. It is five minutes after seven. And thank you for that really quick work session that we did. So caucus, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. For the record, not a work session, but a caucus. Thank you for that caucus, Shannanta. And we have arrived at some decisions. And let's go, if you could help me with the roll call. And let's get all the members who are present. Delegate Toth, we are doing a roll call. Delegate Amber Canaz-Pacrotti, we are doing roll call. And other delegates that are on the line, either text in or say that you're here. Your name and say present. Can we go ahead and do a roll call? Please. Honorable Helena Nez-Begay. Honorable Helena Nez-Begay. Honorable Helena Nez-Begay did not answer roll call. Excuse me, Honorable Helena Nez-Begay answered roll call. Madam Speaker, Kristalyn Curly is present. Honorable Casey Johnson. Honorable Casey Johnson. Honorable Casey Johnson did not answer roll call. Pro temp speaker Jermaine Simonton is present. Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson did not answer roll call. Honorable George Toth. Honorable George Toth. Honorable George Toth did not answer roll call. Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito did not answer roll call. Honorable Casey Johnson is present via text, excuse me, via Zoom. Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson did not answer roll call. Honorable George Toth. Honorable George Toth. Honorable George Toth did not answer roll call. Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito did not answer roll call. For the record, Honorable Dr. Andy Nez is excused with that pro temp speaker. You have 20 delegates, including yourself, who are present, who have returned. Oh, thank you. And with that, we go back into our NABI session with 20 members present. And we, in our caucus, we've decided from LOC and RDC or BNF, they placed their members on the board, as you can see, to the right of me. And then if I could, so during caucus, Delegate Slater erased himself from the bottom right. Is that INTEC? And is that Mr. Slater? Okay, delegate, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for turning my mic on. I had requested to speak beforehand to remove myself from consideration before we went into caucus, but I wasn't recognized.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Delegate Slater, and you are withdrawing from nomination for INTEC. So let's take Mr. Slater off of INTEC. And then there are, everyone else is just one member until we get down to NOG, Navajo Nation Oil and Gas. And there we have two members, and that's the only one that has the two members, Herman Daniels and Casey Johnson. And I'm going to give you opportunity, if one of you is going to withdraw, and if not, we will be voting on one of those two members, voting one of those two members into Navajo Nation Oil and Gas. So at this time, I'm calling upon Mr. Daniels or Mr. Casey Johnson. Does anybody voluntarily withdraw? If not, we will go to a vote between the both of you. Going once. Going twice. And gone. So we have two members for NABI that have been nominated for Navajo Nation Oil and Gas. We have Mr. Herman Daniels Jr. as well as Casey Johnson. So is she, the way that we are going to do the vote is so we can go Herman Daniels, and so he'll go up for vote first. If that's who you would like to place from NABI on Navajo Nation Oil and Gas, you push the green button. So I'm recognizing right now Vince James, actually, on cue. Yeah, your request to speak right now. Are you taking that off? Okay, Vince James is taking off. And now, and I have next, Mr. Rick Nez.
Thank you, pro temp speaker chair. I believe if we assign the green votes to Honorable Daniels and Honorable Casey Johnson, the red votes, that should work.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there is recommendation. Okay, so you, I'll, yes, that would be the fast, easy way to do it. So if you heard and structured the recommendation from Delegate Rick Nez, what you're going to do is if you're going to place your vote for Delegate Herman Daniels, you're going to push the green button. If you're going to place your vote for Casey, Delegate Casey Johnson, you're going to push the red button. So at this time, let's go ahead and go to vote. So green for Herman Daniels, red for Casey Johnson. We're going to vote, Ms. Shamasana, Ms. Carotti. Green for Herman Daniels, red for Casey Johnson. This is for Navajo Nation Oil and Gas. The last one who cast her vote buys us dinner. Honorable Lamardo Asseret, how do you vote? Delegate Amber Carotti, can you please ask the question again?
A point of order? Were the nominees given time to say why they wanted to be shareholder reps?
No, they were not.
What did Delegate Daniels say or what did Delegate Johnson say why they wanted to be a shareholder rep?
The answer to that, Delegate Carotti, is no, we did not ask them why they wanted to be shareholder rep. That would be up to, that is each delegate's choice. That is up to each individual delegate how they're going to place their vote. We have a few lingering orange spots. If you could please place your votes. And actually, let's go ahead and go to roll call vote. Honorable Helena Nez-Begay, how do you vote? Honorable Helena Nez-Begay. Honorable Helena Nez-Begay did not vote. Madam Speaker, Kristalyn Curly, how do you vote? Madam Speaker votes green. Honorable Casey Johnson, how do you vote? Honorable Casey Johnson. Honorable Casey Johnson did not vote. Honorable Shandine Parrish, how do you vote? Honorable Shandine Parrish. Honorable Shandine Parrish did not vote. Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson did not vote. Honorable Curtis Yanito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito did not vote. Going back once more, Honorable Helena Nez-Begay, how do you vote? Helena Nez-Begay did not vote. Honorable Casey Johnson, how do you vote? Honorable Casey Johnson did not vote. Honorable Shandine Parrish, how do you vote? Honorable Shandine Parrish did not vote. For the record, Honorable Casey Johnson votes red. Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Danny Simpson did not vote. Honorable Curtis Yanito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Yanito did not vote. With that, and for the record, Honorable Dr. Andy Nez and Cheryl Nyazi are excused. Pro temp speaker, you have 13 delegates who voted green, four delegates who voted red. With pro temp speaker Jermaine Simonton not voting. Okay, with that, Shannanta, there is 13 yeas in favor of Herman Daniels Jr. to represent, be representative on the Navajo Nation Oil and Gas. And there are four votes for Casey Johnson. And with that, Herman Daniels has the majority vote. So we, if I could ask if you, I'm sorry, your name again? Julissa, Julissa? Julissa, if you could go back and do the reading again and how we've placed, who we placed in each of the positions, starting with INTEC? I do that, okay. Michelle. Michelle, if you could do that.
Madam Speaker and delegates, the nomination for the Navajo Transitional Energy Company is Honorable Ricky Nez. The nominee for DINEH Development Corporation is Honorable Vince James. The nominee for Navajo Times Publishing Company is Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. The nominee for Navajo Community Development Financial Institution is Honorable Brenda Jesus. And the nominee for the Navajo Nation Oil and Gas Corporation is Honorable Herman Daniels. Madam Speaker, pro temp.
So with that, we have a name to each of the shareholder representatives that we will place from NABI. Would anybody like to offer that amendment? Okay, I saw Speaker Damon, and he'd like to offer that amendment. And then I have Eugenia Charles Newton as a second to that. Okay, and Delegate Carotti?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it. I appreciate the motion by Delegate Damon for the amendments to include the delegates into a shareholder reps. If I could ask, as we now are moving into the amendment, my question would be for the nominations of each of these shareholders. I'll start with on page three, line three, if we're inserting Ricky Nez. As we move forward, because this is a nomination, and now the amendment, if Delegate Ricky Nez could help me understand the role of the shareholder for INTEC regarding their governing documents and how Delegate Nez is going to inform the committee as the shareholder representative when they have meetings, what's discussed, and the updates as the role as a shareholder rep. I'd also like to ask, because on page three, line six, we're inserting Delegate Vince R. James, if Delegate James could let me know his understanding of the governing structure of the enterprise and the role of the shareholder representative, and how Delegate James will provide or inform NABK committee as a shareholder rep of the shareholder meetings that are called, and how Delegate James will be providing that information back to NABK committee as the shareholder rep. I'd like to ask on page three, line nine, for Delegate Eugenia Charles Newton, if Delegate Charles Newton can provide insight to the governing structure and documents of the enterprise and how Delegate Charles Newton plans to notify the NABK committee of the shareholder meetings, what's presented, what's decided, and how that information will be conveyed back to the NABK committee as a shareholder rep. And then on page three, lying 12, after the word honorable, insert Brenda Jesus, if Delegate Brenda Jesus can provide insight to the CDF by enterprise governing document and structure and the role of the shareholder representative, and how Delegate Jesus will provide updated or provide information to NABK committee when the shareholder representative meeting is called, what's decided, and how NABK committee was represented in that enterprise. And on page three, line 15, where we're going to insert Herman M. Daniels, if Delegate Daniels can provide insight on oil and gas, enterprise governing documents, the role of the shareholder rep, and how Delegate Daniels will provide information to this committee on when shareholder meetings are announced, what is discussed, what was decided, and information then conveyed as being a representative of the NABK committee. Thank you, pro temp, those are my questions.
So, members of the 25th Navajo Nation Council, Shannanta, I'm going to, so there's questions that Delegate Carotti has stated. And I'm going to go ahead and defer to Dana on how to proceed and whether it be the actual nominated shareholder representatives to answer that, or would it be the person, Delegate Curly, who is sponsoring the legislation? A motion to the amendment?
Thank you. So this, so Delegate Carotti's questions are complex to know, to figure out how they should, who should be answering them. It would be simpler if the standing committee rules of order contained a question of privilege. Actually, what Delegate Carotti is asking, would all fit under council's question of privilege, council's question of privilege rule. Unfortunately, NABI as a standing committee, there isn't a question of privilege in your standing committee rules. So I, my recommendation, so there's not a clear answer to how to go about this. My recommendation is if Delegate Carotti wants those questions answered tonight, that they probably have to go to the delegate sponsoring the amendment motion. And then that delegate can request if the various nominees wish to answer that question. They could do it that way. They could also refuse to answer the question. But that's what I can offer. I'm well, I would like it if anybody else had a different interpretation to let me know so I could mull it over. But other than that, that's how I think you should go, Speaker. That's my recommendation. Back to you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Barbov. And I'd like to go ahead and go back to the motioning party, Mr. Damon, and how we'd like to proceed with that.
Thank you very much to the question to that. Thank you very much to the question to that, well, first of all, thank you very much for pro temming this meeting, Honorable Vice Chair Simonsen. The second would be going to the question, as I am the motioning party. I can't formally answer those questions to you, Madam Chair Crowdie, as the recommendation was through a nomination process. And the nomination process, usually at that time, they would, the individual would state their position. In this case, there was no position made, and in some cases, there was no other individuals nominated for those specific slots or line items for each one of either DDC, Navo Times, and Navo CDFI. Now, speaking to Navajo Transitional Energy Corporation, there was two individuals on there, and one of them was withdrawn, and that's why you see Honorable Ricky Nez's name on there. Now, going to Navajo Nation Oil and Gas, Honorable Herman Daniels, and Honorable Casey Johnson, there was no formal position, but there was a vote that was taken, and Honorable Daniels is in that, as moving through the formalities to getting this resolution passed, to moving, which would move on to the next line item that's on the agenda. I think that that's the reason why I motioned to get this completed. There would have been somebody else to do that, but the Honorable Chair, Pro Tem Chair Simonsen, recognized my nomination in my motion, which would go ahead and do the amendments on these line items. So, Madam Chair Crowdie, I don't know if there's going to be any formal presentation, but I think that that can be directed to the individuals and everyone else that's part of these discussions. But since we're talking about just NABI Ki'atik Committee, I think we'd go back to the Chair of the NABI Ki'atik Committee to go ahead and work together with the individuals that will be representing the entire committee as a whole, and getting that information back to you, and when they are seated and having their first meetings, and getting that formal information back to Madam Chair, and I guess the rest of the committee, to be apprised of not only the business relationship, but also what other recommendation, whether, what kind of questions that might be of any fiscal matters too as well. So with that, that's my answer at this time, having, obtaining the motion on this amendment to legislation 00, what is it? 0089-23. So again, I'll go ahead and yield back to the floor.
Thank you, Shenanah, Mr. Damon. And then let's go ahead and go to Ms. Delegate Charles Newton.
Thank you, Speaker Pro Tem. Adoh, eheh, shadaja, thank you for asking that question. As you know, during the 24th Navajo Nation Council, I did send periodic emails about issues that were coming forth. So I shared as much information as I could as a shareholder, because, and I even did updates on Facebook about, you know, what we were talking about. So I do try to keep people informed on social media, and then through emails that I was sending to the entire 24th Navajo Nation Council. So I'll be happy to provide you information. And then in terms of the shareholder, I think that Dana did during orientation cover the various enterprises, and she talked about, you know, what their responsibilities are. And I believe there was information shared about the shareholders, because I know I got the information on INTEC through email, and I believe there was also the email that was sent on, I think it was oil and gas. I haven't gone through all of my emails from that time from orientation, but I do recall those two emails that were sent out with information. So, and I, because I'm not looking at my emails, I can't really say if it was sent out to the entire 25th, but I'm seeing nods here from other delegates. I'm assuming that the delegates did receive that information, shadaja, so you might want to look into the email, and then, you know, all of the questions that you asked are within, you know, within that email. In terms of me being a shareholder, what my responsibilities are, I can say honestly that for Navajo Times, because I was not a shareholder for Navajo Times, I would have to look at the shareholders' documents that were sent to us and read into that. But I do, I will continue to update the 25th Navajo Nation Council on issues that are, that do affect the Navajo people when it comes to Navajo Times, as I did during the 24th, when I did sit on INTEC. And then also the issues that are coming down the pipeline, and then, you know, the meeting information. I think that, I do recall when we did have council or a NABI, I would make those announcements of when the upcoming meetings were going to be. Whatever committee I sat on, subcommittee, even as a shareholder, I did announce those meetings, so that the entire 25th Navajo Nation Council was aware of what was going on. And I think that we also, I know, I got emails from the different enterprises inviting me as a delegate on the 24th Navajo Nation Council to be a part of those meetings, and I did take part in a few of those meetings. So I'm guessing that, and again, it's a guess, but I think that they're going to continue to do that, because I think they want more involvement from delegates, to know what is happening, and then to know, you know, what information that we don't always necessarily get in a report or here at council. I feel like honestly, with the shareholders' meeting, because it was a small bunch, we were always very open to talk about the issues that we were, you know, that we thought were issues, and, you know, advocating for change. And that's how I was always, you know, being a shareholder, a former shareholder on INTEC, I always tried to hold them responsible because of the part within their legislation that says that they're supposed to be looking at alternative forms of energy. And that was one thing that I always held to them, is we're hearing, you know, about coal, that's all we're hearing about, you know, what are we doing for alternative forms of energy? What are we looking at? And that's, I think, you know, part of us as shareholders, we would ask those questions, and I know that they started pushing for a lot of the solar, and then getting funds for solar as well, or actually allocating funds within their enterprise for projects like solar. So I think that, at least my experience being a former shareholder, those were some of the positive things I seen coming out of being a shareholder, is that some of these changes could happen within, and because it was a small group, we could make recommendations on where we wanted to see the enterprises going, and then, you know, and also try to sometimes, you know, advocate, but then also hold them more accountable. So I think that, at least that's what I did during the 24th, and I will continue to do that, and I will continue to make announcements of the upcoming meetings that we're having to make sure that everybody on the 25th Navajo Nation Council is aware of these meetings, so that if they choose to, they can attend and sit through those meetings. And again, as a, even though I wasn't on some of the other, you know, I guess as a, on the other enterprises as a shareholder, I do recall sitting in on a few meetings just to see, you know, what was going on, and how they were handling their shareholder meetings. So I just want to make that clear, Delegate Crowdie, and I appreciate the question. I know that you're always about transparency, and I am too, but as I stated, you know, I try to update, I do update weekly, and I do tell the community, you know, what I'm doing, where I was at, you know, the trips that I've been, you know, that I took, also, you know, the meetings that I've had, aside from those that are, you know, private meetings with maybe families, but I do try to keep that information abreast. And as Delegate, or Speaker Damon stated, in all honesty, I have to look at the shareholder information for Navajo Times, but you can bet that I will be reporting when the meetings are, and then reporting on the issues that do affect Navajo people. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Charles Newton, for responding to the questions that were presented. I also have Delegate George Toth on the line.
Thank you, Madam Chair, shenanah. I think what Ms. Crowdie is trying to do is that we are under oath, and we are bound with ethics and rules. We should have a procedure for these type of appointment, so we don't have to embarrass our community. Even now, we should know what's going on. We should have a procedure in place, how these elections are made. During my time, we always say, caucus with your agency. Give everybody a chance to select each other. Really need to learn how to run this, the meetings and council. And rules, how we can select. It's just like when you were selecting the speaker. So I really commend Ms. Crowdie is trying to put us in line. Appreciate that. That's what we need, somebody to keep us in line, even though we've been on this council for a long time. A lot of rules needs to be updated and changed. Chapter needs your help, they want you to talk, they want the community to talk to you, they have some issue. Even though, when we say that my job is at the Winderup, I don't think that's the case. We're elected, people elect us. They didn't say, go over there in Winderup, stay away from. They came to you and voted for us to say, advocate for me, advocate for us. And his son also, the time we started was like 130, now it's only 40. Sometime, my phone goes off, or my computer's off. So, we have the responsibility to tomorrow. Adoh, eheh. Adoh, eheh. Sometimes, my phone goes off, or my computer's off. So, eheh. Adoh, eheh.
Delegate George Toth. Adoh, kona, eheh, Ricky Nez.
Thank you, Pro Tem Chair Simonsen, Honorable Members of the 25th Council. We all have a fiduciary duty to represent the Navajo Nation, whether we're a shareholder or a delegate, you know, representing our chapters, or as an individual delegate myself, I always tell my chapters, I represent six chapters plus 110. So, as a shareholder from the previous 24th Council for INTEC, we have met at least twice a year. Adoh, they gave us documents, they let us know about your operation, and on these documents, it's normally stamped non-disclosure agreement, just like their own attorneys, they give us documents, attorney-client privilege. So at times, we would make recommendations and tell INTEC, perhaps, you need to come before NABI Ki'atik and provide a presentation. So, there's delegates, some of you have been on the 23rd Council, 24th Council, and now the 25th Council. If we want change, change, I would ask you, from the 23rd Council, what change have you promoted? So, I understand that, Honorable Crowdie, you were a shareholder for Navajo Nation Oil and Gas on the 23rd Council, but perhaps you need to tell us if there are any changes back then to the current if there are any changes back then to the current, uh, in Navajo Nation Oil and Gas. Ash oh etla oh, etzash, has anything improved just from your observation? Has the stipends have been the same? How many meetings have you all, uh, been conducting at that time? You know, akutah, Nashadentl kido, I'm okay with you asking me questions. But you know, I feel like I have a right to ask you that question as well. And I think if we talk about transparency, let us all appear as if we are glass that we can see through. Akutah eh, halha ira don danil. And, uh, you know, we get on these things and then we start picking on each other. Akutah sheha eh bin dil nshtoh behashtera ha dil nih. We, we do our best to be on these, um, uh, enterprises as shareholders. And I, I see the board there. It's, um, pretty fair as to what we are trying to do here. And I don't see any names on there. I'm, I'm wondering why some names are not on there. So, if the names are not on there, are they going to turn around and criticize us and say, oh, hotalt, eh do doho yo nda nishda dats, itan hilneh do leh eh di ki. Ha ilah eh do dagodats eh, ha ilabani na eh ya do, do oh huneh, na nishiki. Do, do they just not want to be a part of that, to represent the Navajo Nation? These are questions that, you know, kalit oh, do, do eh, lato ta nebaya chitkitala shareholder, etlon, wintsun, etto. So, these are just things that I, I'm sitting here thinking about and, you know, I'm, I'm always here and I'm ready to share any information as a shareholder for, for INTEC. I always say that four of my chapters, District Fourteen, San Juan, and Hanzada, Upper Frulina, Burnham. They're right here, right there. We surround INTEC, Navajo Mine. Navajo Mine INTEC gives to the Navajo Nation General Fund thirty-nine percent. Basically, cheh wix, eh, they haul coal all the way to the western side to grandma and grandpa and everybody who, who wants to keep warm. Akoh datsuk. Eh di ki do, yo ba akunitsun da, hotalt eh heki etto. So just to mention that and I'm glad to be on INTEC because it's just right there in my backyard and, oh, akutah eh heka bahadeshitoh, eh heha, thank you. Ready to vote here.
Oh, eh heha, Delegate, um, Mr. Rick Nez. Eh heha, dekui goshin eh sah behainzi ito eh khaege shido oh kado, oh ban tsaskes. Ado di khae at, ah ah ni eh ya, shenanat ah ah. Shareholder presentation, willia orientation banasate. Ad eh ya, eh eh dih akutah na nishigi, khae ha lon. Eh khae, ajeh eh eh, eh lha, uh, khae, nchida doh nihtan chidot ni. Ado adeh, uh, ye go, bin na idideh kiel nosan go. Aden chabe eh hot, nchabe eh hot itnt eh eh. Akoh, ado eh ya, um, kado, uh, shenanat ah ah, Mr. Herman Daniels ya hatzi. Um, kado ye, nshonoko eta ilia, uh, unso ban tsaskes. Uh, kado hes nipiyado eh, nshonoko eh, ilkeda dilni eh dih kwechida na hisi tcha do da dih noh. Ado khaepeh wyl ah kha kesbeh. Eh eh do, do eh khai da alga deta ahon njo noh, deh neh ilket, do sanhi ilketni kheh. Do njo noh ye, lga da des, ado kweh deh biji italia. Akoh, ah, lhih teh, ad eh neh, lahodona khego, yissohta, nle. Akoh, ado eh kado, um, nleda nhinan nishida la. Eh khae, danhitek jo dekui shi. Uh, uh, khae, Mr. Nez do, uh, Delegate Vince James, so Delegate, uh, Eugenia Charles Newton, do Delegate Herman Daniels. Eh sheh nleda, uh, kado nhinan nishida la. Akoh, eh shin khaebe, uh, kado, uh, Amber, uh, Delegate Karadi, yin na idil kediha shin tsogo. Na taan shin bechha nahtzi, do eh, eh ha deshitshi noson, bin, bin na eh, nchijik kweh deh daasso. Akoh, eh ye, shemasana oh, kado bananai nishka. Uh, ne do na ltsos beh, eta na ho dih tcha hih. Lha eh, uh, eh esyin, dekui shi, um, uh, de mo, uh, nte, uh, dekui shi, uh, nleda, uh, akoh, akutah. Di deh shareholders ji, do ta deh noh, akoh. Eh ya da, uh, hajo oh, ishtanalia do, uh, yahan neltsozo, ad eh, eh dih tega ba winnt ihe do lih, nshsanya. Ad shin jonoh akutah, beh nit ihe do lih, adeh. Akoh eh sha, eh, akutah eh, inla neh, akoh. Eh ya oh, khae ba, uh, bahadeshi. Ado khae, um, jo, nleda, tsos ito, wetehol kiel shenanat ah, san tse bigat. Ado dekui shi, uh, ishtlaa dih nitzi, ah do ba deh nit idah. Akoh eh ya, khae, isshoiki eh ya, Brenda Jesus, ado, uh, Delegate Daniels, ado, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Karadi, khae nchijik na daasso. Do, uh, khae, Ms. Karadi, yin na idil kedi bechha na taan ha deshitnososhi. Um, oh, she, uh, jo, uh, uh, oh, she, nshonoko sah ilket ntoh, neltoh. Oh, yo ah, tskeli koyant beha dozi, beh nan yinshka. Akoh, eh khae, um, Delegate Brenda Jesus, Chair, khae na da nshah.
Eh heha, thank you, pro temp speaker. Uh, ado, um, Honorable Simonson. And then, and just in response to, uh, Shadeja, um, Honorable Karadi in regards to your question. Um, the Navajo CDFI, I know, is a revolving loan account that Navajo Nation had initiated through appropriating, I believe it was twenty million dollars for, funding for a lot of our Navajo entrepreneurs and businesses in the communities across the Navajo Nation. And, um, when I was with Division of Economic Development, I realized that, um, these loans were given out from amounts of five hundred to a million dollars depending on the need by the entrepreneur. But most of the time, um, it was noted that the equity was not, um, really there by the business venturer. So oftentimes, I realized that there had been some, um, agreements to where some of these funds that supposed to be a loan was being, and given away in form of grants now. So with that, um, I, I know that, um, again, this is from a business perspective. It's supposed to sustain, you know, our economy here on Navajo Nation. And I'd like to be there alongside, um, individuals that are making the decisions, you know, on behalf of Navajo Nation in hopes that, you know, the Navajo CDFI prospers and starts thriving in terms of, um, giving out loans to our Navajo, um, business venturers on Navajo Nation. So with that, in terms of reporting, I'm most certain that reports can be given, you know, in form of written reports where I can definitely just put into, um, uh, call ees mailbox there at the Steno office just to keep, um, the delegates abreast of all the, you know, information that is new with Navajo CDFI. And then also, uh, definitely will be working close with Division of Economic Development as well. And currently, you know, being the oversight of, um, Division of Economic Development, this would be one area that, that the, um, enterprise needs to be thriving and prospering in hopes that we get more business development here on Navajo Nation. So that's my intent and, um, I do appreciate the nomination by Chair Parrish, you know, for this, um, enterprise. And again, I just wanted to make that quick response, Deja, um, Honorable, uh, Karadi. Uh, back to you, pro temp, um, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Eh heha, Chair Jesus, khae na taan sah behanenzi ito, nshonoko kado na idikidi abekeho. Na taan sah behanenzi, ado kweh biji nan isshoiki eh ya, uh, shenanat ah ah Herman Daniels.
Good evening, kado dam. Pro temp chair, uh, Shadeja kado. Bahhe hilne kado, aru na na kado. Sponsor of the legislation, aru enda kado, amendment eh ya kado. Aru na idikir kado dam, Shuma. Shumayezha kado dam, Honorable Karadi. Uh, thank you for the question, kado. Uh, do kado ta inostwa gi do, kado seska ah, mish. Keteri, mbat eh olkaas kado, neh eh, ahah ko. Mbat isenhat kaneki bahhe hilne shokado. Akoh, kado, ba na eh dekir kado. Rup, nabiki eti, chukado eh representative eh ni, ni seko, to shareholders. Beyond the shareholders. Enterprise. Akoh, na gayda, the last, um, term, Twenty-Fourth Council. Ita shareholder, khaasatah. For Navajo Nation Oil and Gas, representing, um, Resources and Development Committee. At that time, na gayda, um, I invited, um, Navajo Nation Oil and Gas to Resources and Development Committee's, um, meeting. Aru na na kado na gayda, uh, akutah eh, eh hishna shisna shoko. Um, I don't have a problem doing that again, um, uh, being on, being a shareholder for, um, representing Navaji. Akoh, na gayda, Oil and Gas, kado toh eh kuthe keshna huysna hasin, yo bohaneh, lahko, kado, nan hito ki, kota. Eh do taizoh, akutah, beh ta inmishi da si banahuisna hasin, bohaneh, lahlo kado. Ado na na kado, appreciated the nomination, kado, kado, nominate shi laagi, kado Shuma, um, Honorable, uh, Charles Newt, kado Shuma, Shumayezha. Eh heha, kado, ado kado na gayda, na shahdeh, kado na gayda, ashinbi thuh, ajeh eh, ado eh na shah, wati deh. Na gayda, ajeh, khaa da, lahlo kado na gayda. Um, around, um, enda Utah, let me, uh, uh, tip, basu da, eh wati eh, ajeh na gay oil, uh, khaa ki, khaa da, lahko, da awa, dohko. Akoh, beh wyl, la da ya, na indeh go. Akoh, go, na gayda, there's a, an area called McCracken Mesa. There's eighteen wells. Eh, ajeh eh, sixty-two and a half percent, uh, royal, oil royalties goes back to the Navajo Nation. The thirty-seven and a half percent stays on the Utah side. Eighty-eight, Utah Navajo trust fund, eh, that, eh, call, aru na, outside McCracken Mesa, there's, um, more wells. And that hundred percent goes to the Navajo Nation. So, um, from that area, a hundred and sixty-two and a half percent of, um, oil royalties goes to the Navajo Nation. Akoh, kado na ha eh, ja, neh, otashashni go, kado na gayda, um, Navajo Utah Commission, they passed a resolution, um, last month. Eh kado na ha, kado na na, otashashnoh, eh kado eh, eh kado revolution, yusha, oni chepetashni, na go. So eh deh ya, oh, kta ba na, fito, leh go, ashii keshin deh, nshtoh, leh go, dih deh na gayda. Uh, believe in transparency, shokado, ado na na kado, na gay stipend, da da, eh gi, toh eh kuthe eh, report and deal, eh go, na gay IRS, which eh. Ten ninety-nine, eh khaa da, khaa da, nahhan yichu hon da, eh, from this, um, enterprise. Eh, we, we report all those to IRS, shokado eh, doh eh nsh, enda go. Akoh, ado eh kado eh, be da na huysna, na gay washna doh, go. Aru inhitwa eh kado eh, weneh la, na dih, leh la, ta dih, eh, kado eh, bechida ha dih, khaa na na, oh, aru, go. So eh eh deh ya, kado dam, doh eh, ado, eh doh na, enda go, koda, ajeh, enterprise na nlingi, go, kado eh, otah bahas, fito lih, kado dam. Um, shesunat ah, shesnigih, ado na na kado. Um, oltoh eh doh bahas, fito lih, so, kado na gayda, ashii kado, keshin deh, nshtoh, leh go, doh neh, nze, uh, doho zo, doh, leh go, doh, oltoh bahas, fito lih. Thank you, um, kado, kado, Shadeja.
Oh, eh heha, shenanat ah ah, Herman Daniels. Ado, uh, khae, um, Manuel just announced that, um, chiyah, nachabeka aliya jineh. Ado, uh, deh shin ta ikha doh lih, akoh, bopat na hiso tcha. Ashon deh, ado da hi dilih, doh, ado da hi doh liye deh. Um, ado kune eh ya, uh, Delegate Amber Karadi, uh, khae, na na hos ash, shemasan.
Appreciate that and I appreciate the answers, um, and feedback and insight and best practices, um, that were conveyed by the nominees for, uh, the shareholder representatives for our nabiki eti committee. Um, I think with best practices, uh, what would it look like, um, for the reporting of the committee, um, in hearing legislative council? It appears, uh, throughout these years of shareholder representatives, not only just the procedure for nomination, but what's the report back? What's the accountability from the shareholder rep? And what does that look like? So to ask, um, this committee, if we could move forward in developing, um, some consistent language in whether it's reporting or reporting back to, uh, the committees that you represent? Because, um, that is in fact what is, this legislation is. You're a shareholder representative of the nabiki eti committee. And as a committee member, I would, um, request that you notify the committee when there's a shareholder meeting and then provide, um, uh, the results of that committee, understanding. And, and I do appreciate Delegate Charles Newt, uh, the, the type of transparency or the forwarding of information that you could and understanding that there was, um, you know, legal questions when it comes to confidentiality. Um, but I, I think that is, um, something that we should, uh, set as, as a norm so that each of the enterprises, we have a procedure in the way that the shareholders, um, not only, uh, the, the conduct of the shareholders, um, but understanding if there's any type of conflict and, uh, then the type of information, uh, that will be shared to the committee. That was a great question in terms of the Twenty-Third Council. And, um, the thirty, the Twenty-Third Council, um, for, and, and with every council, um, you know, our faults, but some of the, the successes in the council um, that I can distinctly remember is, um, you know, our, our ability to start looking at the violence in the communities. And so as a member of the Twenty-Third Council, starting in, um, twenty fifteen, that was, um, a space, especially at the committee level, um, with Health, Education, Human Services, uh, we were able to really dig into, um, what was happening on the ground uh, with our veterans, um, with our elders. Because at that time, the Navajo Nation had planned to, um, start, um, closing down the senior centers. So working with like senior councils, working and looking at what do veterans need and, and how they can move forward, looking at veterans housing. Um, and moving, uh, those procedures along that, that needed more refinement. But it was really having these honest conversations about what our people were suffering and how as, um, a council, we need to pivot. And that's part of this shareholder rep, where the enterprises have the funding, the lobbyists, the ability to have the attention of leadership, and our people were neglected. And we had chronic funding challenges with our senior centers. We had chronic funding challenges with our veterans. Um, we continue to have chronic funding challenges with Head Start. Well, actually, they're doing better. Head Start was at crisis where we nearly lost Head Start. Um, and so all of these social programs were neglected. And the eye of leadership was at gaming, was at anything that sparkled, anything that promised prosperity. And so, um, it was not an easy, um, it was not easy to speak up in front of the full council on these areas. But the Health, Education, Human Service Committee was steadfast with leadership. Uh, we had Chair Hale, Vice Chair Norman Begay, myself, the late, um, Nelson Begay, the late Stephen Begay. And, you know, we had Delegate, um, Peter for a while, Peterman for a while. And, um, and so I, and, and so in looking at that, I think that's where we're at now. I could see where that has, those have slowly changed. So, um, what I would want to see is how could we continue to get an engaged leadership, council leadership, to continue to advocate for the social issues? And have at least one of us be identified to, um, I always hear presidents say this, like a champion. So for each of us, what, what social cause are we going to champion? Cause we need each other to do this work. And, um, and so what that looked like? Because if you don't know, on the Twenty-Second Council, shareholders went to federal court against the enterprise of oil and gas. The shareholders, the delegates, whatever hat they were wearing. And so there was training.
Delegate Crowdie and delegates of the 25th Navajo Nation Council. I don't equate vote that they need to need a cohorting at Qua Beho Atoleh.
Please, Mr. Toth here.
Point of order?
Okay, uh, Del- Okay, Shenant, uh, Mr. Toth, uh, point of order, that's in Kate.
Uh, point of, uh, no, I'm not, point of privilege.
Uh, though, uh, Nabakiya Tchiko, eh, point of privilege, upon a ten, done, eh, a cohort or point of order, Shin Doleh.
I vote, uh, Madam Chair, if I'm order.
Point of order, oh.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, the reason why I'd say point of order is I have some question regards to the, uh, the individual that were selected. In, in ethics rules, is it okay for the people that were selected to vote for themselves during the vote?
Okay, uh, Chaila, point of order, not it, uh, Delegate Adosso, point of order.
The, uh, point of order that has been raised, um, sounds like it's a question to move so, move forth to debate the legislation. So, uh, part of, point of order is to raise when discord happens, or if the, uh, any business to bring the meeting back to, um, harmony here, but the, uh, what's being requested through a point of order is a question. So, uh, I believe, um, through point of order, that's not allowed. Thank you.
Okay. I, I acknowledge, I'm gonna go ahead and acknowledge, um, Mr. Toth's point of order, and we sort of heard him really quickly, so let me defer that, he, he had a, a question, actually, and he said if, if, uh, you, um, so let me go ahead and defer that to, um, Ms. Barbaroff.
Uh, thank you very much, um, so what I understood, Delegate Toth's, uh, point of order to be the question he asked was whether, uh, the delegates who've been, uh, nominated for the position, whether they are allowed to vote on the legislation, and then even extending that a little bit, uh, can they vote for themselves? Uh, and the answer to that is yes, uh, they can vote, and they can vote for, uh, themselves. Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker Pro Tem, and thank you Delegate Toth.
Um, Delegate Toth, speak at the end, Chaya, sit in Zash.
Uh, Pro Tem Chair, in the, my term was, he was, he was not allowed to, because that we've been practiced that in chapters, that the people appointed or selected were not bound to vote for themselves, that was the, the last, uh, ethics rules that was implied, so I guess, uh, if the attorney says to go ahead, and, you know, I'll, I'll still question the, uh, ethics and rules about that, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, uh, what, um, Adoshi, uh, Qua a vote that they need to need, na eh, Bichitandadi Ka, so let's go back to vote.
Okay, so I ask if there's any other questions. Speaker.
Atin Adakushii Adatsi, uh, please go to vote, and, uh, let's go ahead and go to roll call vote.
Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Danny Simpson? Honorable Danny Simpson did not vote. Honorable Curtis Unito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Unito? Honorable Curtis Unito did not vote. Going back once more, Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Danny Simpson? Honorable Danny Simpson did not vote. Honorable Curtis Unito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Unito? Honorable Curtis Unito did not vote. For the record, Curtis, excuse me, Honorable Curtis Unito votes green via text. Honorable Danny Simpson did not vote, and for the record, Honorable Casey Johnson is excused. With that, Pro Tem Speaker, you have twenty delegates who voted in favor, one delegate who opposed, with Pro Tem Speaker Jermaine Simonson not voting.
Eh, yeah, aco, koi go eh, da ilialana, dinolt eh, outa donid, ado alla eh, eto tanu, na ke ado iata, ado lta ta zapa na idol kit. Are there any other questions? Going once. We have Delegate Eugenia Charles Newton. You're on the board.
Okay, so, uh, next we have Delegate Slater.
Thank you, um, I just would like to raise the point that, uh, Mr. Toth, you, you voted for yourself in the HES appointment legislations, so the principle you introduced about not voting for yourself here is something you, you did at the HES committee.
Thank you Delegate Slater, and we go on to, um, Honorable George Toth.
Go ahead, Mr. Toth here, Madam Speaker, Pro Tem. I would like, if any of the ethics and rules are on the call, I need to have clarification on this voting thing. In the past, we've been practicing that if you're selected for this particular position, you are supposed to abstain, that's the way we've been doing in, in chapter government, why is the Navajo Nation are not practicing? So I want a clarification, if, if the speaker can do well, I guess when I get back, I can contact the ethics and rules, see, get an answer for them. Eh, deyana, this kid only, so the concern that I have, eh, deyah, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Toth. Ado, kene, eh, ya, uh, Shamasan Amber Crowdie.
Oh, yeah, on the main motion, um, Shiaja Pro Tem, I'd like to offer an amendment. Um, I believe this has been sent out to, uh, the Nabakiya Tchik Committee. If I could have, um, staff pull it up and make sure that it is sent out, um, just wanna go back to the amendment and make sure, here we go, right here, I believe it's being resent out, appreciate it, the support from the staff, the State of Council, oops, I'm sorry, that's not, I'm a bit delayed here on my email, so, um, amendment, oh yes, it was sent at six twenty-two via email, and, um, some of the conversations that we had on the legislation, um, that has not gone before this committee yet, uh, that I'm, that I'm sponsored and have been working on since 2016, um, and I, I would want, I, I'm going to present that committee, that legislation, it, it's on table at RDC, but they, they've moved forward with their nomination, so I'm gonna move forward the legislation, um, is to look at the ethics laws, and it, because it talks about this appearance or this conflict, and, um, the, the reduction of the council was a response from the public about the mismanagement of funds, and, um, the, the, the public feeling like the council had lost its way in terms of, um, the role, the responsibility, the authority, and especially like the, the, the management of funds, or the funds they alleged or, um, or gave each other, and so, what, this amendment is my hopes of addressing at least one of the areas when it comes to shareholder representatives, uh, so it'd be on page line three, or I'm sorry, page three, line sixteen, to insert a new paragraph, um, so it would be F, uh, the Nabakiya Tchik Committee members appointed herein as shareholders or member representatives shall not receive any meeting attendance fees, stipends, and/or travel compensation, including reimbursement for exercising their shareholder or member representative duties from the Navajo Transitional Energy Company, company or corporation, Dine Development Corporation, Navajo Times Publishing Company, Navajo Community Development Financial Institution, Navajo Nation Oil and Gas Corporation, and/or the Navajo Nation General Fund. Uh, so that is the amendment that I'm proposing, colleagues, committee members, I think this could be one of the first steps we take collectively, um, as a committee to try to start, um, true, you know, identifying areas, gaps, uh, of clarity, and then providing some direction as we move forward with these shareholder or member representatives. Uh, that is my amendment, and, uh, I'll stand for any questions, thank you.
Uh, thank you Delegate Crowdie, and let me go ahead and go back to Michelle, and can you please read, um, that amendment into the record?
Amendment number two, amendment two, legislation zero zero eight nine dash two three, one, page line, page three, line sixteen, insert new paragraph as follows, F underscore, the Nabakiya Tchik Committee members appointed herein as shareholder or member representatives shall not receive any meeting attendance fees, stipends, and/or travel compensation, including reimbursements for exercising their shareholder or member representation duties from the Navajo Transitional Energy Company, Dine Development Corporations, Navajo Times Publishing Company, Navajo Community Development Financial Institute, Navajo Nation Oil and Gas Corporation, and/or the Navajo Nation General Fund, underscore, end it, two, renumber or reletter succeeding paragraphs, sections, and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The Office of Legislative Services and the Office of Legislative Council are authorized to make technical edits to this legislation and its exhibits to implement the committee's intent. This amendment supersedes inconsistent language in any other amendment. Madam Pro Tem Chair.
Um, there you have it before you, uh, members of 25th Navajo Nation Council, and amendment number two, and do I have a second to that amendment? Do I have a second, uh, Mr. Toth on the line? Those of you on the line, do I have a second to that amendment? Going once.
I do.
And I have Delegate Shandine Parish, who will second that amendment? Is that correct, Ms. Parish? Okay, we have a second on that amendment, and I would like to, um, proceed- With questions? Okay, so if there are members of the council who have questions on this amendment, or would like to speak to this amendment, I give you that opportunity. Uh, Delegate Slater.
Thank you, Shisui, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. So, the last one there says, "And/or the Navajo Nation General Fund," so if a delegate is traveling, so one of these delegates who is just appointed a shareholder, they're gonna have to pay out of pocket to attend and perform these duties, and that to me means that they're not serving as a leader of the Navajo Nation at that point, if they're not there in any sort of official Navajo Nation capacity, they don't have a TA, they're not authorized in that end, so, I think, I, I have some reservations on the last one, and I understand that not having the companies provide any compensation to the individuals who are serving as shareholder representatives, but my fear is that these delegates, you know, if it's gonna be a huge financial burden to them, they might not do this, um, and if this work is on behalf of the Navajo Nation, then it makes sense if they got their mileage or whatever it is, um, to drive into Winder Rock, or go to Shiprock or Farmington for whatever meeting they need to attend, so, I guess I'd like to hear some more explanation on why the, the travel wouldn't be covered by the council.
Thank you Delegate Slater, um, and I will turn it back over to you, Ms. Crowdie.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate that, um, so I think, um, so we go back to what hat is, um, the delegate wearing, as, as I mentioned, um, prior, so if we could find funding in the general funds, like we do for committees, or subcommittees, or any of the other areas that we are nominated and appointed, uh, then I would be up to modifying to strike that out.
Okay, Delegate Crowdie, are you asking to modify your amendment?
Uh, Shadisia, I, I'm not asking, I'm, I'm, um, asking the staff on what they did was to strike out that language, and I think that would address, uh, Delegate Slater's concern. If we could, if we could, um, create a, a space in the budget for this activity, um, if delegates are going to need support for travel, and, um, and there's also a line item in the budget for meetings, so like for committee meetings, I believe we get, like sixty-two dollars, so, yeah, I'm fine with that, if we could put that in the budget for their meetings, that would be great.
Okay, um, do we go back to another reading? Um, let me go ahead and go to Delegate Shandine Parish, as you are the, uh, second to the motion, uh, do you agree with striking out and slash or the Navajo Nation General Fund?
I concur.
Okay, so, uh, can we have a second reading?
Amendment two, page three, line sixteen, insert new paragraph as follows, F, the led, the Nabakiya Tchik Committee members appointed herein as shareholder or member representatives shall not receive any meeting attendance fees, stipends, and/or travel compensation, including reimbursements for exercising their shareholder or member representative duties from the Navajo Transitional Energy Company, Dine Development Corporation, Navajo Times Publishing Company, Navajo Community Development Financial Institution, and Navajo Nation Oil and Gas Corporations, strike through and/or the Navajo Nation General Funds, two, renumber or reletter succeeding paragraphs, sections, and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The Office of Legislative Services and the Office of Legislative Council are authorized to make technical edits to this legislation and its exhibits to implement the committee's intent. This amendment supersedes inconsistent language in any other amendments. Madam Chair, Pro Tem.
Oh, thank you for that, and I'd like to go ahead and go to, uh, Speaker Seth Damon.
Thank you very much, uh, good evening colleagues, and good evening to, again, Madam, Pro Tem Chair, um, for allowing me to speak this evening, um, and thank you very much, Madam Chair Crowdie, for bringing this forth as, uh, as a consideration for debate, um, Madam Chair, um, the, uh, the question I have right now is, one is that this legislation, is- is, I don't have the legislation for me, I did have the legislation, one, the, the legislation is specifically related to, uh, appointing members of the, of the Nabakiya Tchik Committee to these certain organizations as shareholder representatives, um, you, because this is an appointment legislation, my first question is, does this, uh, action change the intent of the legislation that further, um, expands the authority of the Nabakiya Tchik Committee? And the reason why I'm asking that question is because you have a legislation that Madam Chair Crowdie has indicated that she's been working on for some time, uh, that she's brought forth and has tabled at Resource and Development Committee, and you have that legislation stating that there would be changes, that, uh, there would be no shareholder reps, now that, what that does is that goes through the process and would go ultimately to Navajo Nation Council, and the reason why I see that, that is, is because there's policies that are, that are already passed by certain committees, there's, there's laws that have been enacted by not only the Navajo Nation Council, but also the president, uh, take for example, uh, Navajo Nation Oil and Gas, uh, that Navajo Nation Oil and Gas was created in, in the policies are through an Articles of Corporation, um, and those policies are, are binding that were approved by the council and approved by the, uh, Navajo Nation President. Now, the plan of operation for certain qualities for other areas, and the only reason why I can speak to oil and gas is because that's the only one I really remember, I, I can't speak to right now specifically to Navajo CDFI, Navajo Times, DDC, or INTEC, but those have specific qualifications too as well that were approved by Navajo Nation Council. Now, can Nabakiya Tchik Committee force those policies through this legislation process? That's my question, first question, and it, does that change the intent of the, the legislation? The second que, cause I, I think that this would be expanding upon and have its own legislation to have an amendment of this magnitude. Now, the, the second portion of that question goes back to the first question, the reason why is because we're talking about, one, uh, under the Navajo Nation law, as Navajo Nation Council delegates, cause we talk, you hear the discussion about wearing different hats, one of them is about the reference of Navajo Nation Council, and under Navajo Nation Council, under, under here, currently, with the, with the modification, it says that, uh, they, they will, shall not receive anything from, the way I'm reading it, um, they, you, you shall not receive any meeting advances, stipends, and/or travel, including reimbursements, while exercising as one of these member reps or shareholders, so, under that, per, under that specifically, we're passing this tonight, but can, that doesn't, does that mean, or does that not mean, that INTEC, DDC, Navajo Nation CDFI, Navajo Nation Oil and Gas, as they're, as they're operating at an arm's length away from the Navajo Nation Government, can they still provide services like what is stated, advance fee or meeting advances, stipends, travel, reimbursements? Can they do that still, because this isn't a Navajo Nation Council resolution? See, I would think that you would have to amend the, 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 the policy at the council level, and then have the president sign that, and then that would be moving forward, but because there's different policies that you have, does Nabakiya Tchik Committee have the authority over Navajo Nation Oil and Gas, Navajo CDFI, Navajo Times, Navajo DDC, and INTEC? Do, do, does this committee have the authority over those specific enterprises? That, that, that's my question. Uh, thank you very much, uh, and then I can go ahead and, uh, follow up, so I, I think the first question, my, my total question is to go back to Office Legislative Council, because I think the direction needs to be on record on where, what, what this amendment's going to do specifically, and, and it's going to possibly make changes to, and can it make changes? Can this legislation make those changes to those plan of operations, specifically to those, um, uh, specific, uh, resolutions that have already been enacted by council, not by Navi, by council? Thank you.
Thank you for that Delegate Seth Damon, Kaiten Kitiigi, and I'm gonna go ahead and, since you requested, uh, for the response from Legislative Council, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Barbaroff.
Thank you very much, uh, Speaker Delegate Damon, um, so, first off, on this amendment, the one thing that you should recognize is that this is amendment will only apply to the Nabakiya Tchik members appointed as shareholders representatives. If this amendment passes, those appointed here tonight for Nabakiya Tchik, uh, they will not receive, uh, any meeting attendance fees, stipends, travel reimbursements. If you however are appointed by, uh, HES, RDC, Law and Order Committee, who did I leave out?
BNF.
Oh, BNF Committee, HES, the other committees, you will, you're still able, the only thing that can be done in this legislation will be apply, will be the Nabakiya Tchik members that are appointed as shareholders representatives, and it is, this legislation is not amending the plans of operation, the governing documents, et cetera, for any of the corporations or enterprises, what it's doing is it is, uh, guiding the behavior, lack of better words, uh, the actions of the delegates who are appointed, that is, and the difference there, maybe the better way to explain it, is the amendment says that the shareholders representatives appointed by Navi will not receive, uh, these types of meeting attendance fees and- meeting attendance fees and such. So, that means you can't get them. Doesn't have anything to do with changing the company's bylaws. It is just, this amendment is a condition, lack of better word, on your appointment. As far as the corporations are concerned, they could still write out, I mean, they could still do some kind of payment, you just can't receive it. So, if they could do a payment in your behalf to charity or whatever. But what this is doing is it's limiting your ability to receive it if you are appointed as a shareholders' representative by the NABI Committee. If this wants to be done overall, and you want bylaws, operating agreements, et cetera, amended, that's going to have to be done at the council level to cover everybody. So, that's where we're at. I hope that answers the questions. If I left anything out, let me know. Oh, back to the purpose question. It's always, you know, historically Legislative Counsel, you all hate this, but historically Legislative Counsel says the purpose of the legislation is determined by, really determined by the sponsor and by the Council itself. Office of Legislative Counsel does not often say violates the purpose or not. But in this instance, I don't think, my opinion is that it doesn't violate the purpose. What you have is you are appointing the representatives, which was the purpose of the legislation. You are, and you're still in line because you're appointing the representatives, but with a condition. So, I don't think it's far out of your purpose, but that is a choice for the Council. So, I think that's it. Back to you, Speaker Pro Tem.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Barbaroff. And next, we have Mr. Slater.
I think I'll waive my time right now. Thanks.
Okay. So, next on cue is Delegate Brenda Jesus.
Yeah, although, Pro Tem, Madam Speaker, I just wanted to add on to what Honorable Damon had mentioned. Now, chairing Resources and Development Committee, we have these enterprises, per their plan of operation, that Resources and Development Committee is oversight. And there is language provision in there in regards to stipends and how the Navajo Nation Council shareholder representative play a role with these enterprises. So, it's really contradicting here and confusing because, one, Shadaja, Honorable Karati did bring her legislation before Resources Development Committee. We did have a lengthy discussion on the legislation in regards to some language provision in the proposed legislation. So, I know that there was recommendations that were made, but one of the concerns that I have is that, will this constitute in changing the plan of operations for these enterprises? Will it affect that? Because I know that Navajo Nation Oil and Gas, their plan of operation has to go all the way back to DC because it's a federal charter. And I don't know how some of our other enterprises, in terms of their setup through their Articles of incorporation bylaws or plan of operations are set up. So, again, that's an area that would also require amendments through the title codes because when we sat down with, or when a lot of these enterprises came before Resources Development Committee, this was the information that was shared with us at the time. And then the other thing is, I know that the standing committees of the 25th Navajo Nation Council have also made appointments as a mutual agreement among the committee members. And this is setting the precedence for only the group here from NABI. But to be fair, would this also be, you know, something that's recommended for the committee appointments as well? So, those are two areas that I'm, in a sense, you know, needing some clarification. And also, in terms of the legislation, I don't know if amendments have been made to this particular legislation. So, I just wanted to just add that from, as Chair of RDC, and I just like to go ahead and give it back to Madam Chair, or Speaker. Yeah?
Thank you for that, Delegate Jesus. And let me, before I give it back to Delegate Karati, I'm going to go ahead and go with Ms. Parrish.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Pro Tem, for recognizing me this evening. I have heard the discussion on the floor for the past few minutes, and I want to thank Speaker Damon for raising those points in the capacity that we are in, which is NABQ Committee. And, you know, I think that this is, I believe in the principle of the amendment, however, I think it would be unfair to only designate this to the shareholders, the nominees for NABQ Committee, where then other legislation have already moved forward that this would not apply to. So, I feel that it is an unfair responsibility that's going to be only put on the NABQ Committee nominees for the shareholders. So, with that, I withdraw my second to the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Parrish. So, I apologize, but I was consulting with Ms. Barbaroff over here and didn't catch the last of your statements. So, what I'm recognizing here on the screen is you're withdrawing your second. Okay. And so, when in that withdrawal, give me a second. Is there any other members of 25th Navajo Nation Council out on the floor and on the line who would like to second this amendment number two? Going once? Going twice? Anybody on the call, Delegate Tolz? Any others on the call? I'm giving you the opportunity. This is going to be going three times and gone. And so, amendment... Okay. So, Sherilyn Yasi? You text in? You're going to second this amendment number two?
Yes.
Okay. And so, we now have Delegate Sherilyn Yasi, who's going to second this amendment number two. And so, let's go back to the floor and on the call to see if anybody would like to speak to this amendment or have any more questions, further questions. Okay. I'm not seeing anybody on cue, and I don't see any hands up. I don't hear anybody on the call. Going once? Going twice? And there are no other questions on amendment number two? And let's go ahead and go to a vote. Honorable Members of 25th Navajo Nation Council, let's go ahead and go to vote on amendment number two.
Delegate Karati.
Okay, go ahead, Delegate Karati.
Thank you. I'm bringing up my rules book, but for committee rules, there's a question in here that I should be able to, as a sponsor of the amendment, be able to answer the questions before the vote? So, I'm just concerned that I'm not being allowed to answer questions. Response by sponsor.
Okay.
I believe it's, oh, wait, no, that's Council Rule 12. I'm going to look for the committee rule. Or if staff could help me. Do I have any... What rule allows me to answer the questions before the vote? Oh, it might be Rule 15.
Yes, Delegate Karati, I did, I did mean to go back after, and I did say it, I did mean to go back to you after Brenda Jesus spoke, and then I allowed Ms. Parrish to go ahead and make her comments. And I said that I would, and I meant to come back to you for a response. So, let me go ahead and, so, let me go ahead and do that right now. Delegate Karati, go ahead, and let me give you the time to respond. Point of order, Mr. Delegate James.
Yeah, Quado, Pro Tem Chair, in regards to the second motion that was made respectfully with Honorable Sherilyn Yasi, earlier it was announced that she was excused from the NABQ Committee. So, but somehow you acknowledge her second motion to this amendment one that's made by Shumasona Honorable Karati. So, where in the rules of our Council is that allowed?
So, the question is, we recognize Sherilyn Yasi's second, and earlier it was mentioned that she was excused for NABI. But I do see in the pink, there are, so... Okay. Okay, the response, Shetel Vince James, is that you're wondering if Sherilyn Yasi was excused. She was for two hours, and she was able to vote on that first, for the first, the first time. So, she is technically in attendance at NABI. So, let me go ahead and go back to Ms. Karati.
Yeah, thank you, Shetel. I appreciate that, Pro Tem Chair. So, to answer Delegate Damon, Speaker Damon's questions on some of the concerns of modifying or changing the plan of operations of the enterprises, as they are some of them under different federal Articles of Incorporation, I believe that was answered by Legislative Counsel, Ms. Barbaroff. The other area that Delegate Damon, what might be the same issue in terms of, is this amendment at the committee level changing any of the intent of prior Council resolutions or Navajo Nation President's signatures? I believe that was also answered by Legislative Counsel, Legislative Counsel assisted with this amendment. And so, I appreciate their assistance with my request for this amendment. I do not, I do not understand my writing, Speaker Damon, if there was another question regarding this amendment. Something about the legislation that will be making its way, that's tabled at RDC, that's actually a very interesting conversation. And I'm going to do my best to recollect what actually all took place at Resource and Development Committee, as I was able to answer some questions on the legislation that, regarding who would it cover, some areas that needed to be, like making sure it wasn't impacting other commissions that are currently funded through the Navajo Nation budget process. And there was a conversation about resource and development oversight over the different enterprises and impacted industries, or, no, impacted enterprises with their shareholder reps. And so, we had talked about tabling, but this is the interesting note, that I think this committee, and this is my recollection, is I was specifically, well, because we were off record sometime, and that's why it's hard when we go off record, we should just keep the mic on. We should just talk unless there's like a legal question or a personnel issue, we should keep the mic on. But, so, I don't, I can't recall in what section of that conversation, but we had talked about if there could be, let's say, a compromise. And so, it was my understanding from that tabling motion that we would come back and have that conversation. But this is prior to RDC taking any action on their shareholder legislation. But since that tabling, the committee has taken action on their shareholder representatives. I was not part of that conversation. I'm not exactly sure who was nominated. And I could go back to the resolution, and I'm not sure if there was any amendments similar to this, what I'm proposing here when it comes to the compensation, because that was a conversation we had at the committee, that if these positions would need time or a lengthier discussion about what does it mean to be a shareholder representative, and if we could look at the compensation aspect of it, to at least remove some appearance of conflict. Because remember, that's what Navajo Nation Ethics Law states, the appearance of a conflict. So, what does it mean when an enterprise is paying you, or the shareholder representative, you know, paying for travel, paying for meals, paying a stipend, basically paying you to meet with them? And I would say that there appears to be a conflict with shareholder reps receiving those financial incentives and then advocating for that same enterprise here on the Council floor. So, if we could remove a part of that, and that would be that financial incentive, because at this time, we have no record of what the shareholders were paid, what travel was paid for, or any other type of, I don't know, I have no idea, like where meetings took place, there's no record. And I don't think that in having this discussion, or at least in the future, that we should just rely on the enterprises to tell us how they are going to organize the Navajo Nation shareholder representatives. That's pretty lopsided, in my opinion, and we should have those documents on file. There should be some public way to be able to access that information. And then it would be good to correlate if there were, because how do you, how do you prove that there's a conflict? Or who's talking to Ethics to say, you know, conflict me out on this, or give me some guidance? Or I'm not clear... I'm not clear, and that's, and that's what I'm asking for. So this is a NABE committee legislation, and that's just my circle that I have. I, I cannot change or modify Resource or Development Committee resolution. If they did not address the financial issue, then that would be to the committee to provide that information. And if Health, Education, Human Services didn't provide a similar amendment, then I can only leave it to that committee to provide why that amendment was not considered. Because each delegate has an opportunity to amend any legislation that becomes, that come before their oversight. And so that leads into the question for Chair Jesus in terms of plan of operation. And when I was listening to what was being asked, it, it does appear that the enterprise sat down with you and voiced their concerns. And that's very typical of enterprises. They're very good at providing as much information that will help benefit the enterprise. And so that's where, and delegates can take that information at face value. Or delegates can also balance the information that the enterprises provide to the delegate and then confer and see, okay, in this position, this is the enterprise's opinion. It's obviously in their best interest, but I've taken an oath, and my position is to be in the best interest of the people. Is there common ground here? Or is there opportunity to change or to pivot away from the enterprises dictating or providing more information to the delegates? Because again, they have the money, they have the resources, they have the lobbyists. You know, their, their board presidents have, have the resources, they have their attorneys. And so that information is easily available to delegates. So I would like to know what the enterprise, which one, and which one they felt their plan of operation would be impacted. Because as sponsor of that other legislation that's not before us, I have not heard back from any of the enterprises. They have not provided any type of information. And, and so I think if they have some issues on where it would impact their plan of operation, this would be the time for the enterprise to provide that information. It could even be done in the public comment, or it could be emailed to my Navajo Nation email. And we could have our, give time to either Department of Justice to review what are some of their concerns. Because in my experience in working on some of the enterprises, their attorneys are their attorneys, they're their clients. And so they, they are working on what's in the best interest of their client, the enterprise. And, and at times, that may not be in the best interest of best practices that we want to see here on Navajo Nation. Let's see, so the recommendation for the committee, yes, Delegate, or Chair Jesus, you are correct. This amendment, because we're in NABE committee, that is the circle of control that we have. It would not affect any of the other standing committees' grant resolutions. But I would ask for delegates who sit on Budget and Finance, like myself, or someone on Law and Order, to make a similar amendment so that we can see that we want some consistency. And we also can ask for Hess and for RDC to consider this amendment, to amend your resolution. And that's possible. So it is not etched in stone, and we can continue to work on that language. Because when it comes to financial, you know, the money, this is an interesting conversation. And that's why I ask, why do you want to be a shareholder? Because if you want to be the shareholder, sounds like you're gonna do amazing collectively all. Well, the nominees are going or have specific areas that they want to impact the different enterprises that they, that they share their role as shareholder representative. But as Navajo Nation Council, there, there's even case law on this, right? Judy V. White, we have a base pay. That, that's very well known, had a base pay. What's not well known, or what can be in the gray area, is our base pay is $25,000. Now, when we get our W-2 forms, we don't get $25,000. It's anywhere from $60,000 to maybe $75,000, depending on the claims and, and the work of the individual delegate. So how do we get more compensation from that $25,000? Well, it's all of these committee stipends that add up. And then we also have in the budget, in the fiscal year budget, you can see there's meetings to attend, chapter meetings. But that internally has, and I'm gonna bring this up in our budget season, that the, the funding that's intended to help or to, to be used for chapter meetings is now being used for other meetings, right, across the board. And so what we have to look at is if the shareholder representative is a role of the delegate, then the general budget should cover that. And it could be under like other duties. I like how one constituent had said like, you know how you have like other duties assigned? It means you volunteered for this committee. And so now, you know, in terms of the compensation, i- is that why you're trying to be a shareholder representative? Or is that why any of the nominees? Because I know delegates later had mentioned, well, if we're going to these meetings and if the enterprises are not gonna compensate us, Navajo Nation is not gonna compensate us. Are we going to these meetings for free? I personally don't have a problem with that. I think if it's part of the role, then there's times, especially as you're volunteering to be in these positions. But that's why I felt like there could be a good compromise to allow a Navajo Nation budget to cover those expenditures and your insurance, because we do receive benefits. And I think we just need to be clear then, when, when we're acting in our capacity of a council delegate. So let's see, that's my chicken scratch for the different committees. In terms of fairness, I don't have a position on that opinion in terms of fairness. I actually think it would have been great to see this from the other committees, this type of amendment from the other committees while they selected their nominees. But I don't sit on those oversights. I do sit on NABE. So we're, and I think collectively, if we could agree, because you don't have to take the stipend. And even if it's in the plan of operation and the enterprise has budget for it, like I mentioned, you don't have to take the stipend. Like you don't have to sign the W-2, you don't have to collect the check, and you don't have to ask for mileage back from the enterprise. So it also can be a, a personal choice. And that's why getting records from the 24th Council shareholder representatives, that would give us an idea if any delegates, if they accepted the stipend, if they were compensated for travel or lodging, and, and give us a better idea. But there was, you know, delegates in the past who felt strongly, and maybe it was because of the reduction from the 88 to the 24, but felt strongly that, you know, try to be as transparent with the money as possible and keep pushing, just continue to ask for transparency. So, Shetel, Delegate Parrish, let's see, so you withdrew the second, and there was a question. The way I wrote it down is not clear, because I wrote down why not the shareholders. So I apologize, Shetel, I did not properly write down your question. But I think in terms of the intent, so we're, it's May 11th. So we've been in council, we were elected, sworn in January, we're in February, March, April, May, four months into it. And a lot of focus has been on the accomplishments of the president. But I also think this council, there has been a lot of focus on what changes is this council going to enact? You know, where, where, when I say pivots, like how are we going to change what has been done in the past? And I, I feel strongly that seeing that we have the opportunity right now to change the way the shareholder representatives' roles and responsibilities, since they're not completely clear. There's not a document I can go to to say, this is the role and responsibility. This is how your compensation will work, this is how you will report. And each committee will be different. I think I would continue to say that we continue to need to be bold. I like that term bold, when I keep hearing it, I love it. And I haven't, and that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. I have not heard from a constituent or a Navajo Nation citizen that feels that the delegate should be in the shareholder representative position. Because of how, you know, the lack of transparency reporting. And so I think, so I'm not, I'm sorry, I cannot recall what was the question or if there was a question or if it was just a statement. But this indeed can impact all the shareholders. This could be the first step in, in many to reform and transform how Navajo Nation shareholders, what are their roles or duties? Because we're in the NABE committee, it's the body of the whole to have this discussion and talk it out. So this is kind of the best way to also gauge the council and where you're at. And, and I seriously think as a council, we need to look at Judy V. White and see how far away we've gotten from that court's decision in terms of our base pay, in terms of, you know, duties and responsibilities, and, you know, how we want to move forward. So if there's any additional questions, I am open to hear from some suggestions or modifications. And I think it's just great to know and be clear the role of the shareholder rep. Ms. Barbaroff, if you could send out that document, I'm not sure, it was from, no, it's, it's for the Navajo Nation oil and gas shareholders, but I think it's such a great document. And, and if we could continue to get more training, maybe like professional development training when it comes to shareholder representatives. And it's also would be interesting to note like how much time this takes away from our duties and if there's like a better way to do it. I love the idea of bringing them before the committee, so information could be shared. And I'm trying, I just can't, oh, and I'm sorry, now I realize why I missed in the summary of, Shetel, when you asked if there was any other questions? Because I wanted to say, as a, as a, in the 22nd Council, what we tried to do in the committee was also allow either the public or media to be present in the shareholder representative meetings so that there could be reporting back. And there was one more area I'm making chicken scratch. And so I think, I'm trying to remember, because I was reading it when I lost. And I couldn't answer that question, but it'll come back to me. So I'll stay open for any additional questions. And I'm looking through actually the legislation right now that's gonna be coming before the committee on this agenda. And it's asking for more money for like legislative than executive. So, so we're just trying to be like, okay, do we have an opportunity right now to make amendments to that legislation to include some funding for the shareholder reps? If you feel like it's gonna be a hardship for wherever your meeting is gonna take place? Like if they're not virtual and you have to travel, I'm assuming somewhere on Navajo Nation? What does that look like? And so we have an opportunity now, before that gets to council, that we could make an amendment to start creating an line item for the shareholder reps. And I think in terms of what someone had said, back to like being fair, because you're shareholder reps, you, you are traveling more, so your, your mileage will be more. And if you're compensated, then you'd be compensated more than another delegate. I don't know if that's considered fair, but I think if you're doing the work and providing that, then, I, I'm not sure if that's what that question was also regarding, if it's fair, if certain delegates wouldn't be, would not be eligible to access this funding. And so I think if, if that was the realm in terms of which delegates get access to the funding, we could have that conversation too. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Amber Crowdy. Next on queue, I have Delegate Ricky Niz. And Ricky Niz has removed, is removed, or Delegate Ricky Niz. Hansi Hishinde, your name was up on the queue. Going once, going twice, and no response from Delegate Ricky Niz. So I'm gonna go on to Delegate Carl Slater.
Thank you very much. I know at the NABE committee meeting, you're allowed to really say whatever you would like, but I'd like to correct what Delegate Crowdy said. I did not say that I or would not be attending meetings if I weren't compensated for them. I'm presently not a shareholder representative for any entity of the Navajo Nation, and I'm not proposed to be one in this legislation. What I was talking and speaking to was the idea that there might be other delegates who would not attend if they cannot, or not, that they cannot attend, but rather if they're not there on official travel and they're not there in their official capacity, then they just seem to be some person who's there representing the, the government on their own dime. And that's where I think things are starting to get a little dicey. I would rather know that my colleagues are there on behalf of the Navajo Nation, which is the shareholder that they are representing in this capacity. And I think that right now, there's an opinion about what a shareholder's duties are. And there's a differing opinion on what a shareholder's duties are. And they're just not gonna align. And it's one of these things on council where people are just not gonna agree with one another. And there may be an attempt to, to compromise any continuation of shareholder duties in order to defeat them, them being a part of the, the nation's complexion. And so I'm still trying to make my mind up on whether we should have shareholders who are elected leaders or if we should have shareholders who are essentially appointed. Because when you move to appointed individuals, they're, they're not elected. Nobody chose them except for other elected officials. So you've moved another degree away from the people and those folks who are supposed to be making decisions on behalf of the shareholder, which is the Navajo Nation, and that's made up of the government and its people. So I think this is a decent amendment to help prevent that perception of being compromised as a leader and a shareholder. But what I was talking to was, you know, we have delegates who fly first class. We have delegates who claim a lot of mileage. And for those delegates, you know, I think compensation is really important to them. And I would be very concerned that if they are gonna be forced to pay out of their own pocket to attend these meetings, then, you know, maybe we're not gonna have anybody at those meetings. And I want to make sure that there's at least someone there on my behalf as a Navajo citizen. And I have no problem if they make 60 cents the mile. citizen, and I have no problem if they make 60 cents the mile driving into Window Rock or Ship Rock or like wherever the meeting is. When I was a shareholder representative for Navajo CDFI and for Natani Development Corporation in the last council, we did everything virtually. So, I mean, I was never claiming mileage or doing anything like that. I don't know how many other enterprises operate that way, but just call in, tell them, no, I'm not going to support giving you money, but thank you for sending me your financial documents, and that was it. But I still think that we have colleagues who have specific political beliefs about what's in the best interest of the Navajo Nation, and if that aligns with an enterprise, then them not making their mileage reimbursement isn't going to change that. So I think that's one thing that we still need to consider in all of this, but not necessarily in this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Slater, for that, and I'm going to go ahead and go back to Delegate Crowde to respond.
Oh, yeah, she is a pro temp, Chair Simonsen, I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification, Vice Chair Slater, in terms of, sometimes, well, what I try to do is, sometimes I get it wrong, is when a delegate or when someone offers like a concern or raises a concern, what I'm trying to do is, when they raise that concern, is say that, okay, they're raising concerns, so it's their concern. So if it wasn't your concern, I appreciate the clarification that it may be someone, another colleague, or it may be another shareholder rep, and, and you were just concerned, raising that concern. So I appreciate the, the clarification in that. I also think, like, this is the best practice. If the enterprise can do everything virtual, then that is something we can scale up, so that, you know, annexing, or if you want to offer the amendment, modify the amendment, you know, meetings will be virtual so that, you know, the, the time or the mileage or any of this, you know, any of these areas, then we won't have an issue with enterprises having meetings off the nation with their shareholders to discuss legislation. And I agree, if a delegate feels that that is in their, that is a positive way forward, I would say they're not considering that they should not be traveling on the expense of the enterprise, talking about a legislation that they're going to use their political power to support. You know, that could be done, that could be done here on the council floor, that could be done here in committee, but I think, I'm sorry, it's about that time where people start walking at night, so the dogs get a little crazy. But that could be something that we look at, because if we look at, like, state legislatures, I'm thinking of like Clarence Thomas, right, Supreme Court, maybe that's too far for, for this conversation here, but he had a duty and obligation to make decisions that impact the people, a community, but accepts gifts from individuals who have like a political agenda. And so maybe our ethics laws are not clear enough, maybe this is a good time for additional, like, professional training, because we don't know, like, I don't know enough, because there's no information out there on who's getting paid and the mileage, but I do know of these meetings. And I know of these meetings because community members were like outraged, and so I think in, in hearing that, and especially when enterprises come back to the nation and are asking for money from the nation, funding from the nation. And so right now, we're talking about shareholder representatives, so that's what I want to say. You know, if a delegate wants to fully embrace and support the vision of the enterprise, I cannot, I cannot control that, but what I can say is, at this point in age, in 2023, 100 years of this council, and the experience that we've learned from shareholders going to federal court, you know, all of the challenges with some of the enterprises, and there's, because they also can be like financial. So, you know, like, some of these enterprises will go to, like, investment committee and ask for like bank restructuring, or like a loan. And, and so it just gets so, these roles and responsibilities, I think, need to be further defined, and so this is just one small step to get there. So I acknowledge it won't solve everything, but at least we're on the way to understand what's going on in these shareholder representative positions, and, and then we just understand, you, you can make your own assumption, but we're all provided the same information, and, and this amendment is just saying there'll be no more compensation from the enterprise, and maybe this is a great way to invest, like, on Navajo, to get the broadband that we need to have the virtual calls. You know, Land Department has a great space there at their conference room. We hosted, you know, the U.S. Department of Energy at NQAs conference room, and that whole, that held like 100 people one day, or 80 people with some room. So there are spaces on Navajo Nation where we could have these conversations, and, and maybe it's like in the impacted area. So I'm, I'm assuming, I don't know, because I've never been to an NTEC shareholder meeting, I'm assuming they're meeting there in the Farmington area. So if there's a delegate that's a representative that's far, they should have the ability to virtual, but I'm digressing. So back to the amendment. The amendment is just saying this is one step in how we can start creating procedures for shareholder representatives, and especially as they represent our committee in this capacity. Let me know if you have any other clarifications, I apologize for that earlier.
Thank you for that, Shmasan, Delegate Crowde. And I don't see anybody else on Q, and I don't know if there are any, I'm going to give you another opportunity for questions or speak to the amendment. Anybody on the call? Let me, I'm going to go once, go twice, and gone. So with that, colleagues, let's go ahead and go to a vote on Amendment Number Two. So Amendment Number Two is, should be up on the screen, and... Yes? So colleagues, at this time, we're voting. Shenanta, Mr. Rick Nez, we are voting at this time. I've already called for, to see if there were other questions. Ado, Ado Ishtana, and I went once and twice and three times, so we're now at voting.
Yeah, unmoved, and I believe if you allow your third time for a second motion to go ahead and let it go, you should be able to let me speak.
Shenanta, Delegate Rick Nez, they're still in the chamber here. So let's go ahead and go to vote. Delegate Rick Nez, we're going to vote.
To request to speak already.
Shenanta, Rick Nez, you did show up on Q at one point, and it is on record, and we, I asked, I gave you the floor, Ado, Ado Ishtana, and then I called three times. I called your name and said, and then your name came off the Q, so, so we're going to If I could ask staff to do roll call vote. Ashande.
May motion, huh? Okay, I just heard, okay, I'm good. Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote? Honorable Stephen Arviso? Honorable Stephen Arviso did not vote. Honorable Helena Nez-Begay, how do you vote? Honorable Helena Nez-Begay? Honorable Helena Nez-Begay did not vote. Honorable Shawna Anne Claw, how do you vote? Honorable Shawna Anne Claw votes red. Madam Speaker, Kristalyn Crowley, how do you vote? Honorable, Madam Speaker, votes red. Honorable Rick Nez, how do you vote? Honorable Rick Nez votes red. Honorable Dani Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Dani Simpson? Honorable Dani Simpson did not vote. Honorable George Tolf, how do you vote? Honorable George Tolf? Honorable George Tolf did not vote. Honorable Curtis Unitto, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Unitto? Honorable Curtis Unitto did not vote. Going back to Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote? Honorable Stephen Arviso? Honorable Stephen Arviso did not vote. Honorable Helena Nez-Begay, how do you vote? Honorable Helena Nez-Begay did not vote. Honorable, excuse me, Honorable Helena Nez-Begay and Honorable Stephen Arviso both vote red. Honorable Dani Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Dani Simpson? Honorable Dani Simpson did not vote. Honorable George Tolf, how do you vote? Honorable George Tolf? Honorable George Tolf did not vote. Honorable Curtis Unitto, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Unitto? Honorable Curtis Unitto did not vote. For the record, I did get your vote, Honorable Stephen Arviso, you voted red. With that, Honorable Lamardo Astaret is excused. Pro temp speaker, you have six delegates who voted in favor, 13 delegates who opposed, with pro temp speaker Jermaine Simonsen not voting.
Thank you for that, and with that, honorable colleagues, with 13 days and 6 days, Amendment Number Two fails to pass. And so that takes us back to the main motion in which we appoint shareholders. And so if, I'd like to go back out, back to you, colleagues, if you have further questions or would like to speak to the amendment. And I see Delegate Slater on Q. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to, Chair Pro Temp, through you, to ask a question to Legislative Council, and that is, is there a rule, if you're present at the meeting, either on the floor or on the call, but you don't vote, then you're not able to vote in subsequent votes? Can we, I know it's something that we've enforced at council, and I believe at the committee level before, but I'm just curious if we can get that clarified. That's all. Thank you.
And I'd like to defer that to Ms. Barboff.
Thank you, Delegate Slater. There is a provision, it's entitled to, I am looking for it right this moment, and I haven't found it yet, but I do know it's in there. So I'm looking, I need just a few minutes.
Okay, so we are giving Ms. Barboff about five minutes?
Yes.
Okay, five minutes, so let's take a quick five-minute recess. Five minutes. It is now 9:40. I give you five minutes, so 9:45. Okay, I believe Ms. Barboff found her response, so you have two minutes and 20 seconds to refill your coffee or catch some cold air, stretch, get some water, take some deep breaths. We're now down to two. And I also recognize that we have two more people on the line, Ms. Crowde and Delegate Rick Nez, so we'll get to you as soon as our, as soon as, after the recess and Ms. Barboff responds to Mr. Slater's inquiry. Okay, delegates, we're on a countdown. Fifteen seconds. So, we'll get back into session as soon as it hits zero, and I'll turn it back over to Ms. Barbara for a response, and then we'll go ahead and continue with other questions on cue. One, zero. Okay, we're back in session, delegates. Our recess of five minutes is over. I'm going to hand it back over to Ms. Barbara to respond to Delegate Slater.
Thank you, Speaker Pro Tem, and I apologize that it took me so long to find it. It's actually what Delegate Slater was asking about is in its one sentence at the end of two, NNC 169B. And it's the last sentence there. It states that "Any delegate who intentionally fails or refuses to cast a vote shall be declared absent from the entire meeting unless otherwise excused by the Speaker of the Navajo Nation Council." And because of the verbiage where it says, "excused by the Speaker of the Navajo Nation Council", that indicates that that rule only applies, or that provision only applies to council sessions. As we are at NABI right now, which is a standing committee, I don't believe that it's, or my opinion is that that rule does not apply to this meeting. Thank you, Delegate Slater. Back to you, Speaker Pro Tem.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Barbara. And if we could refocus here, and I'm going to go ahead and move on to Delegate Crowdy. You have the floor.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Can I get that citation one more time? She has, I was writing it down, and I didn't get it all. Title II.
Title II, 169B.
Coram, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So, this is back to the main motion. So, in reviewing the legislation, Shadija Chair Curly, in terms of, help me understand. So, as Chair of this legislation, I did hear you at the beginning on the main, or in the discussion, refer back to the training that happened on March, end of March. And I want to appreciate Mr. Rico. He did send that out with the presentation information. And some supplemental information is also this document from 2015 that was sent out to council at 9:22. And it talks about specifically the NAWG shareholder roles. Is there another, either training document or document that talks about the roles and responsibilities for delegates and their roles at these different enterprises? So, oil and gas is, like Article 17, I forget what. The way they're developed is in all different formats. And so, when that training occurred, can you give me some insight then on what are the differences with the different enterprises? Because they all play different roles. And so, in that training and the intent with your team, how did you convey the differences for the shareholder representative training? Because what should we expect as Navajia Kit? How do you envision this committee getting the information regarding if meetings are called, it may go to the individual shareholder representative? But if you're representing the committee, I now need to know as Chair, how are you going to foster that transparency and communication with the rest of the committee? And I just want to be clear on what my expectation would be, and so that I could do follow-up, especially when there's areas that come up in the future, when it's, whether it's dealing with system dollars or other funding. I want to make sure that I have all the appropriate information and that the nation or nation leaderships have not promised the enterprises, and that has already happened in this term with other enterprises, of things that the nation will do. And I don't understand how any leader can promise that because unless they're counting votes or they have, you know, there's these conversations that are already taking place. So, how do you envision having that transparency for myself as a committee member of Navajia Kit? Thank you, and I'll yield back the floor.
Thank you, Delegate Crowdy. And I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Speaker Curly for a response.
Delegate Crowdy, there were already some recommendations on the floor of how this communications among shareholders and the committees will follow through. So, we do want to encourage those recommendations on being transparent in some of those reports that will be coming from the enterprises as itself. Just should a do kwa eggi shareholder and shli da alto as Speaker. So, one of the things, you know, my colleagues here for being a shareholder are just giving you that dual responsibility for being that communication gap between your colleagues and also the Navajo people. Just keeping that communication. And then during the orientation, each of the enterprises did have the opportunity to present a lot of their priorities, their challenges, and also what they foresee in how a shareholder will be within their meetings, even the legal aspect, and also as leadership as itself. And the majority of the presentations were also geared through ethics of how a shareholder will be conducting themselves. And we did email those presentations that were done during the orientations. And I think my colleagues who were there that raised important questions during that time, during that orientation, where you had the ability to ask as many questions as you like during that orientation. And I did, during that orientation, I did say I will be dropping that legislation once these orientations are done. And just looking forward to that dialogue between our shareholders and 25th Navajo Nation Council. Pro Tem, Vice Chair Simonson.
Oh, speaker Curly. Ado, I see that Delegate Rick Nez is on the line. The floor is yours, Mr. Nez. Mr. Rick Nez. Mr. Ricky, Delegate Rick Nez. I'm recognizing you and giving you time. I'm even waiting an extra few seconds. Going once. Mr. Nez, okay, go ahead.
I was going to speak on that last amendment we voted on, but now we already voted on, so I don't need to be speaking on it other than to say that I think Honorable Crowdy's legislation that she said she's been working on, it needs to make sure everything's complete on there. And, you know, for me, I don't mind being a shareholder without any stipends because I only live about 25 miles from Intek Office, but I would be concerned about my colleagues on the western side to travel this far. And I was just concerned about how, we talk about transparency, and it goes back to trying to insinuate that there's financial improprieties like bribery that might go on. And just listening to the conversation, you know, I believe that we all go through the ethics and government law training when we're elected. And therefore, we all know what we shouldn't do, you know? We know that. But to kind of, just the conversation that we're having, I believe this conversation, the intent of the legislation's really just for appointing colleagues into these five enterprises, and that's pretty much what we're doing. I think the legislation that was put aside during the spring session, it could have that discussion. And that's where that discussion needs to come, is there. I just got home, and it's easy to just sit at home and talk and talk when we don't really sometimes consider that our staff is tired and they're there. Yes, they get paid and all that, but, you know, we've been there since this morning, and I'm sure staff would like to go home as well. And let's just be respectful and just go ahead and vote on the legislation and move on. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Rick Nez. I do not see anybody else on cue for questions. Anybody else on the call? I'm going to call once, call twice.
Are you ready for me?
Delegate Crowdy, go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, I'm going to go, well, the reason why I asked the sponsor for the main motion regarding the training is there is, on Slide Eight of the training that the delegates went through and have the ability to answer questions and hear from the enterprises. I'm not sure why the enterprises were involved, but they seem to always go toe-to-toe with what delegates do. And that's fine for the delegates to accept that information, but there's areas that were identified here. So, if you went over, and, so let me just address, for Delegate Nez, I can't control how you interpret what I'm saying. What you're saying is not my intent. So, what I'm looking at is, look at Slide Eight. So, Slide Eight says, what is a shareholder representative? We have Navajo Nation Supreme Court language here that stated that, you know, shareholder representatives are essentially trustees of a public trust asset for the Navajo people and must be exercise their fiduciary duties, right? According to this oil and gas versus Lewanda Rock Court District. I don't know if that's a, I don't know if that's a correct. But that's 2014, so that happened in the 21st Council. And so, that's something that we have inherited recently, are these opinions from the Navajo Nation Supreme Court. Now, if you look at the second bullet point, it does state, "The Navajo Nation Supreme Court, however, did not define which fiduciary duties the shareholder representatives were to exercise and did not define the contours of the trust relationship." So, essentially, this council in the last nine years has never gone back to define these duties of the shareholder representatives when it comes to fiduciary duties and did not define the contours of the trust relationship. And so, it's this history that is needed and that was provided as training to delegates that we collectively have to answer this question. So, my attempt in my questioning and raising concern is to say, since 2014, June, I don't know if there's another delegate working on this. We do have oversight. There's no evidence that any of the oversights, including budget and finance, is working on it. So, it's not personal attacks. No one delegate has been isolated. It's saying collectively, we have to define. And it shouldn't be the enterprises that define that for us because we're the lawmakers. We need to develop that. And one of the areas that I was looking at was, if you have a fiduciary duty, then what does that mean if you're getting compensated? And there's a choice to be compensated. I'm not sure how many shareholder representatives chose not to be compensated, but the records will reveal that in later time if we ever get access to that. And I'm not sure why we don't have access to it now. And I'm thinking, and I'm going to Slide Nine, and this is, because we all did the training, so when I ask a question, my assumption, and I apologize because now I'll go back to the primary document, is this is where it's coming from. So, it does say on Slide Nine, shareholder representatives who have the duty of care to act with the due care in the best interest of the Navajo people. In parentheses, it says, "as opposed to the best interest of the council", close parentheses. So, what does that mean? When we are talking, asking questions, possibly debating, but looking for clarification? I am looking for clarification on this legislation that is nominating shareholder representatives for the Navajia Kit Committee? When you hear that statement, any of the nominees, what does that mean to you? Excuse me, what does that mean to you? And then what actions are going to take place so that we have some indication that you are acting in the best interest of the Navajo people and not in the best interest of the council? And that's in our training document, Slide Nine. I'm also looking at, in this training document, it says, "The shareholder representatives have a general duty of loyalty to prefer and further the interests of the Navajo people over the shareholder representative's own interest." How do we determine that? What are we monitoring? What are we, what can we fall back on to measure that? How do we know the shareholders that are? How do we know the shareholders that are nominated in the committee are acting in the interests of the Navajo people? Are there documents? Is it like tribal consultation where the council has a resolution and has had some kind of vetting and it moves it forward? Or if this is saying the Navajo people, then we have designated a way to go out to the community to have these holistic conversations and pull in their opinions and their concerns and see if, you know, the enterprises are working in their best interest? What does that measure tool look like? Is there something that is developed? And is there something that we can input information so that we know we're meeting this criteria? And the third area says, "The shareholder representatives have a duty, have a general duty of loyalty to act solely for the benefit of the Navajo people in all matters connected with the entity." That is so broad, and I could not say how we measure that or as shareholders. So pre-dear shareholders, shareholder representatives, how did you do that? We had attempts at Health Education Human Services under the 22nd Council to share that at the committee and then take action, as I described earlier. But since then, especially in the 24th Council, I could not tell you how shareholders at that time provided or were in line with these general duties. And I'm not sure if... I cannot recall the training we received on the 23rd Council or 24th Council? Oh gosh, I'm getting them confused. The 24th Council, but for the 25th Council, now we've had all this training. So we know these are our duties if you're going to be a shareholder representative. My questions are asking, how are we going to measure this? What actions are you going to take so that we know general duties are being followed? And so let me... I don't know how many more of these have. So it also says in our training, now I'm on Slide 10, it says, "Shareholder representatives have a general duty to obey instructions from the Navajo Nation Council unless instructions requires the shareholder representative to do something improper or violate its duty of care to the Navajo people." What does that mean? And in the training, and I apologize, I got the days wrong. I thought we were starting on Monday, and we started on a Sunday. So let me pause here and ask either the sponsor of the legislation, what does that mean as you're sponsoring this legislation to nominate shareholders? If they have a general duty to obey instructions from the Navajo Nation Council? Unless the instructions require the shareholder representatives to do something improper or violate its duty of care to the Navajo people? I need some guidance, and if it's from that training, I could ask Legislative Council. If you could give me interpretation as we develop these either procedures or protocol or measurements so at least we know there's some accountability to the shareholder representative on the general duties that were trained back at the end of March. Shadijah, yield back the floor.
Oh, thank you, Amber Delegate Crowdie, for that. And I'm going to go ahead and refer to sponsor Delegate Curly. And then if Dana, you'd like to also respond to that. And I do recognize and see you Delegate Shananda R. Rick Nez. So let me go ahead and get and have the response to Delegate Crowdie.
[speaking Navajo] Pro temp chair, thank you. Slides 8, 9, and 10. Presentation. And, you know, each of our delegates as shareholders, you know, we hope we are coming into the same messages that our responsibilities and duties as a shareholder, you know, it really comes back a sole individual responsibility to carry out what is in the best interests of our Navajo people. [speaking Navajo] So it is going back to each of us as a delegate on how we want to fulfill our duties as an ethical and proper and appropriate shareholder to all these enterprises. [speaking Navajo] I have that full confidence in each of you that we will fulfill the duties as a shareholder in the most ethical and, you know, appropriate way to express the best interests of our Navajo people. At this time, I would also like to extend further explanation to our legal counsel, who did prepare those slides for us during that orientation, specifically to Slides 9 and 10. [speaking Navajo] Pro temp chair?
Thank you. Delegate Speaker Curly. I'm going to go ahead and give the floor to Ms. Barbara.
Thank you, Delegate Crowdie, for the questions and also Speaker Curly for sending, giving me an opportunity. So generally, in ethical duties or duties of a trustee, whether you're exercising them, that's always a very fact-specific question. But I could go back through the general duties that are set out and give you examples. If I remember right, I actually did that at the training. But one of the... What I'm hearing from Delegate Crowdie is she's envisioning putting together some type of document that would get some type of legislative approval, probably from Navi, that more clearly defines the duties of the shareholders' representatives and how and what and when they are going to report back to their committees as well as establishing some process to report to the Navajo people. And certainly, my office can work with her to put that together. We can probably even rope in ethics and rules for some general advisement. Ethics and rules has to be careful on not getting too specific. But yeah, we can put that together. Specifically, I'll give you an example. So let's look at Page 10. The one Delegate Crowdie said, "What does that mean?" Shareholder... And I'm looking at the first bullet. "Shareholder representatives have a general duty to obey instructions from the Navajo Nation Council unless the instructions require the shareholder representative to do something improper or violate its duty of care to the Navajo people." So an example. And I'm not saying this would ever happen. I'm just, you know, making an example. Perhaps the shareholders' representatives all got... All the... I'll just pick on Intech. Okay. So all the shareholders' representatives for Intech, although with Intech, they're called members' representatives. But let's just say council did some type of directive to the Intech shareholders' representatives that they were to take all actions they could to support, I don't know, dumping of all the coal ash in some community. Does the shareholder representative... Can the shareholders' representative support that? Well, not if it is not in the best interest of the Navajo people. So sometimes, the council might, for various reasons, issue instructions that further the company's desires, but the shareholders' representatives, regardless of council's instructions, the shareholders' representatives still have a duty to step back and say, "Ooh, is that in the best interest of the Navajo people?" So those are the types of situations. And, you know, when we go back, and sometimes when you look at a presentation days, months later, you can go back and say, "Oh, I wish I would have added this." And so I'm going to do that here. And I'm going back to Page 9. First bullet. "Shareholders' representatives have a general duty of care to act with due care in the best interest of the Navajo people as opposed to the best interests of the council." And I would go back now and add, "and/or the company." So shareholders' representatives always need to be acting in the best interest of the Navajo people and how... And to ensure that the company is acting in the best interests of the Navajo people by complying, furthering the original purposes of the entity. If you go back and you will look at plans of operation, governing documents, they all start with, "What is the purpose of the enterprise or the corporation and such?" And that is not always, as a matter of fact, very rarely is it, is the only purpose to make money. If you'll go back and you'll look, there's usually numerous people, purposes. Employment, the gaining of expertise, the expansion, economic development and such. So I think I've rambled on enough right at the moment. But Delegate Crowdie, we're... My office is certainly able and willing to work with you on a document that further delineates shareholder representatives' responsibilities, reporting, et cetera. Back to you, Speaker Pro Temp. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara, for that further explanation. Let me go ahead and go to Delegate Rick Nez, who's on the queue.
I'm going to go ahead and waive my request. Thank you.
Oh, and Rick Nez waves his request to speak. So with him off the queue, I don't have anybody else on the line. If there are no further questions, let's go ahead and go to vote on amendment, that amendment. Main motion. Let's... I'm gonna go once. Okay, let me go ahead and have Michelle do a second reading, please.
Amendment 1, on Page 3, Line 3, insert Ricky Nez. On Page 3, Line 6, insert Vince R. James. On Page 3, Line 9, insert Eugenia Charles Newton. On Page 3, Line 12, after the word honorable, insert Brenda Jesus. On Page 3, Line 15, insert Herman Daniels Jr. Six, renumber or re-letter succeeding paragraphs, sections, and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The Office of Legislative Services and the Office of Legislative Counsel are authorized to make technical edits to this legislation and its exhibits to implement the committee's intent. This amendment supersedes inconsistent language and any other amendments. Madam Pro Temp Chair?
Thank you for that, and we will go ahead and proceed to vote. Main motion. Yes. Let's go ahead and vote. We are going to vote. Our only activity on the floor is a vote. Ashon de Shananda.
You did a really good job, Speaker Pro Temp. That was very complicated, very complicated. And I think you did a great job. And I would like you, if you wouldn't mind, do me the favor of don't spend the next few hours beating yourself up. I should have said this. I should have said that. You did a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Delegates, let's go to vote. We have a couple of orange spots. And let's go ahead and go to roll call, please. Vote. Honorable Stephen Arveso, how do you vote? Honorable Stephen Arveso? Honorable Stephen Arveso did not vote. Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Danny Simpson votes green. Honorable George Tolth, how do you vote? Honorable George Tolth? Honorable George Tolth did not vote. Honorable Curtis Yanito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Yanito? Honorable Curtis Yanito did not vote. Going back up. Honorable Stephen Arveso, how do you vote? Honorable Stephen Arveso? Honorable Stephen Arveso votes green via text. Honorable George Tolth, how do you vote? Honorable George Tolth? Honorable George Tolth did not vote. Honorable Curtis Yanito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Yanito? Honorable Curtis Yanito did not vote. For the record, Honorable Lamardo Astaret and Honorable Casey Johnson are excused. With that, Pro Temp Chair, you have 16 delegates who voted in favor, three delegates who opposed. With Pro Temp Chair, Jermaine Simonsen not voting.
Thank you very much, honorable colleagues, Ashon de Shananda, for being here with us this long. We have 16 yays, three nays, and three not voting. And with that, the main motion in appointing shareholders has passed. [speaking Navajo] Thank you, Vice Chair Simonsen, for chairing the Navi Kiyatik Committee meeting. Although, we do have a motion to adjourn by Delegate Crowdie.
Ado, koi gi, we do have a motion to adjourn by Delegate Carradine. Ado, ketney yaggi kodoh, Honorable Norman Begay. Kodoh, naatikidishin kehala on the recess motion. Kodoh, Honorable Chair Vince James.
Huh? What? What are we? Uh, heh, to, to motion to adjourn. Eh, eh, koi gi, elias le. I guess my request would be to ask the motioning party if we can withdraw. And I'd like to make a suspension of the floor rule to do a consent agenda for three items on the agenda. So that would be my request to the motioning party.
Hakoshin, eh, heh, kodoh, Honorable Chair James. Kodoh shade, Honorable Delegate Carradine. There is a request to withdraw your adjourn motion. Delegate Carradine.
Thank you. I appreciate the request, she has Chair James. What items were you considering to put on the consent agenda? I'll go back to floor.
Uh, kodoh, Chair Vince James.
Uh, heh, Speaker Shenanah, intaki do, motioning parties, nohtlinigi. Do question, aliagi, the suspension of four rules to do a consent agenda. Ban sis kesi, ki, eh, was item C, legislation number 0093-23. Ado D, legislation 0094-23. And then E, legislation 0079-23. Kote edo lift on Speaker Shaha.
Hakoshin, eh, heh, kodoh, Chair James. Ado, kodoh shade, Delegate Carradine. Nelshtak, oh, ko, there is that recommendation for consent agenda for those three legislations. So there was a request to withdraw your adjourn motion.
Oh, eh, heh, thank you, she has Delegate James. I actually have questions on the Subcommittee on Gaming. So I'll continue to move forward with my motion to adjourn. I didn't continue questions on the shareholder legislation to respect the delegate who raised the time of hour and the well-being of our staff. And so I didn't continue to ask questions regarding defining those duties so that we could move forward with an adjournment. Thank you.
Kodoh shade, Delegate Carradine. Legislation 0092-23, that was item B, was not a part of Delegate James' consent agenda recommendation. There was, Chair James did mention that for item C, item D, and item E, that does not include item B, which is the Gaming Subcommittee.
Oh, I see. I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification, Shadesea. Okay, I could withdraw if Delegate Begay agrees. I'll defer to Delegate Begay.
Hakoshin, ketney yaggi, Honorable Begay, eh, da, da, kos, o, a, kone. Hakoshin, we do have withdrawn motion to adjourn. Ado, a, nas, shi, bethna, kone, banas, dogi. Kodoh Chair Vince James.
Eh, heh, Speaker, thank you. Ado, shanat, ah, nohtlinigi, do, shal, tla, hasi, lo, ati, ni, isan, nots, agi. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the floor rules to have a consent agenda for item C, legislation 0093-23. Under New Business, again, D, legislation number 0094-23. And then under New Business, E, legislation number 0079-23. That would be my motion, Speaker, and colleagues of the 25th Navajo Nation Council. Kote, eh, la, eh, heh, thank you.
Hakoshin, second by Honorable Dr. Andy Ness. To Rule 20 of Suspension of Floor Rules, it will just require a majority vote. Kodoh, shto, tla, na, banas, tolkida. That is a motion to suspend floor rules to do in a consent agenda for item C, D, and E.
Um, thank you very much. I am requesting the motioning party to consider to add on the consent agenda 0098-23. Thank you.
Hakoshin, kodoh, Speaker Damon. There's a request to the motioning party. Ado Chair Vince James.
Um, kodoh, since I have Speaker Birthday Boy, Damon making that request, I'll go ahead and respectfully honor that.
Hakoshin, ado kone, sakit ki, a, kone, lto. Eh, heh, kodoh, nona, Honorable Rick Nez, on the motion. Koi gi, point of order, Chair Eugenia Charles Newton.
Thank you, Speaker Curly. I want to just get clarification on, I guess, can we add legislations that have funding, I guess, attached to it onto the consent agenda? I thought that we couldn't. But maybe that's just that Council, I don't know. Can I just get some legal clarification? Thank you.
Hakoshin, eh, heh, kodoh, naatikidigi. We'll refer that over to our legal counsel, Ms. Barbara.
Thank you for the question, Chairwoman Charles Newton. You can, the committees can add any, any legislations they want to the consent agenda, including funding legislations. What I think you're referring to is that emergency legislations, which historically have generally been funding legislations, emergency legislations, which can only be heard at Council and bypass the five-day posting requirement, the five-day public comment. Those are the legislations that can't be added to a consent agenda. But other than that, you can add at a committee any legislations you want to a consent agenda. Madam Chair, back to you, or Madam Speaker, Chair, or such.
Eh, heh, Ms. Barbara, kodoch, eh, tek, khaidatsi. Hakoshin, ado kone, naatikidigi, shi, yash. Honorable Rick Nez, via Zoom.
Thank you, Speaker. Arisnan, ah, nohtlinigi, all four of these legislation have Navajo Nation Council as final authority. So let's just go ahead and vote on it. Thank you.
Hakoshin, eh, heh, ado kone, Delegate Carradine, to the motion.
You, Shadesea Chair Curly, I have questions for legislation 0098-23. The way it was put together is, is interesting because it, it just looks at, you know, legislative, there's more unmet needs in critical areas. And we just had a report today. And so I'm going to ask that that legislation be removed from the consent agenda so that it could understand its intent and how the agent who created this legislation looked at the needs of the nation in a comprehensive way. There's also no allocation for judicial branch. And I think that's something that needs to be rectified with some additional comments. So if I could pull off 0098-23, thank you.
Hakoshin, eh, heh, Delegate Carradine. Just for clarification, colleagues, when we do have a motion for consent agenda, and if one delegate opposes for one item on that consent agenda, it does automatically come off the motion off the consent agenda. Ishin, a, hot, edo, le, for, we still do have, there is an objection to item F, legislation 0098-23. So the consent agenda will keep going forth with item C, D, and E, dolel. Ado, shdo, shla, na, banas, tolkida. Any comments or question on the motion? Second call.
Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson did not vote. Honorable George Toth. Honorable George Toth. Honorable George Toth did not vote. Honorable Curtis Yanito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito did not vote. Going back to Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Danny Simpson did not vote. Honorable George Toth, how do you vote? Honorable George Toth did not vote. Honorable Curtis Yanito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Yanito did not vote. For the record, Honorable Lamardo Assaret and Honorable Casey Johnson are excused. With that, Madam Speaker, you have 16 delegates who voted in favor, two delegates who oppose, with Madam Speaker Kristalyn Crowley not voting.
Hakoshin, eh, heh, ado, koi gi, be, la, zli, dolel. We do have 16 in favor, two oppose, and Chair not voting. Thank you, colleagues. This will go over to next portion of our agenda, since it was a suspension of floor rules, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Staff, could you read those legislations into the record?
Legislation 0093-23, an action relating to N'abikiyatik Committee and Navajo Nation Council, confirming the appointment of Ms. Sharon Warren to the Commission of Navajo Government Development for a term of four years as the Fort Defiance Agency Council Representative. Honorable, excuse me, sponsor, Honorable Brenda Jesus. Co-sponsor, Honorable Nathan Nota. Legislation 0094-23, an action relating to the N'abikiyatik Committee and the Navajo Nation Council, approving the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Brenda Jesus' Delegate Region. Chapters include Oak Springs and St. Michael's. Sponsor, Honorable Brenda Jesus. Legislation 0079-23, an act relating to law and order, health, education, and human services, and N'abikiyatik Committees and the Navajo Nation Council, amending to NNC Section 403, meeting date for the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee. Sponsor, Honorable Vince R. James. Madam Speaker.
Eh, heh, kodoh, staff, n'juno, g'on, khana, ini, k'tra. Do we have a motion? Motion by Honorable Nota, second. Honorable Parrish. Our colleagues, a consent agenda does go straight to a vote without debate.
Honorable Stephen Arveso, how do you vote? Honorable Stephen Arveso, votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton, how do you vote? Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton, votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi, how do you vote? Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi, votes green. Honorable Herman Daniels, how do you vote? Honorable Herman Daniels, votes green. Honorable Rick Nez, how do you vote? Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Rick Nez did not vote. Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson did not vote. Honorable George Toth, how do you vote? Honorable George Toth. Honorable George Toth did not vote. Honorable Curtis Yanito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito did not vote. Going back up, Honorable Rick Nez, votes green. Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Danny Simpson did not vote. Honorable George Toth, how do you vote? Honorable George Toth did not vote. Honorable Curtis Yanito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Yanito did not vote. For the record, Honorable Lamardo Assaret and Casey Allen Johnson are excused. With that, Madam Speaker, you have 17 delegates who voted in favor, one delegate who opposed, with Madam Speaker Kristalyn Crowley not voting.
Eh, heh, kodoh, consent agenda. We do have a vote of 17 in favor, one opposed, and Chair not voting. Kodoh, be, la, ta, na, ta, sidli. Thank you, colleagues. Next item on the agenda, we're going back to legislation 0092-23. We have a motion on Zoom, I believe it's Delegate Carradine. Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Colleagues, are there any comments or questions on the motion to adjourn? Second call. Third call. Colleagues, we're going to a vote for motion to adjourn.
Honorable Shawna Ann Claw, how do you vote? Honorable Shawna Ann Claw, excuse me, Honorable Shawna Ann Claw, votes red. Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson did not vote. Honorable George Toll, how do you vote? Honorable George Toll. Honorable George Toll did not vote. Honorable Curtis Yanito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito did not vote. Going back up, Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? Honorable Danny Simpson did not vote. Honorable George Toll, how do you vote? Honorable George Toll did not vote. Honorable Curtis Yanito, how do you vote? Honorable Curtis Yanito did not vote. For the record, Honorable Lamardo Asseret and Honorable Casey Allen Johnson are excused. With that, Madam Speaker, you have 10 delegates who voted in favor, eight delegates who opposed, with Madam Speaker Kristalyn Curly not voting.
Eh, ha, thank you, staff. We do have a vote of 10 in favor, eight opposed, and Chair not voting for the adjournment. Colleagues, thank you for, there's quite a few of us still in the council chambers, and thank you to our staff for being here with us this late, and we will move those two legislation on to the next special or regular meeting, Nubekiyatik Committee Agenda. Eh, kwa'egi, nikhanani shna'eli'ado leh. And reminder, colleagues, we do have a work session tomorrow for, at 9:00 a.m., with the Division of Community Development, to discuss the Sehessen Fund Projects, ARPA Projects in Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah Projects. Eh, wata', 9 o'clock, konya hanane, je'to leh. Colleagues, have a good evening, have a safe evening, and we'll see you tomorrow. We're journeying at 10:48 p.m.